Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the September 7th, 2023 Virtual Meeting of the Jersey City zoning Board of Adjustment. This virtual meeting is held in accordance with NJSA 10:4-12, which is part of the Open Public Meetings Act. I would like to now call this meeting to order. If Mr. Francisco Espinoza can take role call, please.
One second. Okay, I see Commissioner Shadine.
Yes.
Commissioner Patel.
Yeah.
Commissioner Park.
Yeah.
Commissioner Boyle.
Yeah.
Commissioner Allen.
Yeah.
Commissioner Lucky.
Here.
Commissioner Donnelly.
Yeah.
And Chair Cor.
Present.
We have a total of eight commissioners tonight.
Okay, so we only need seven commissioners, am I right, Mr. La Paglia?
That's correct, so.
Okay.
Mr. Lucky, do you want to stay if you have to leave early?
Yeah, I'll stay. I'm good for at least till about eight or something in that area. I may have to jump out and jump back on. That's what I'm trying to do.
Okay.
You could leave if you like and not join the meeting at all. We have we have we have seven if you leave now.
No, I'm actually okay. I'm good.
Feels good. So then we need one of the alternates or somebody else to volunteer to at least step aside for a moment.
And then come back?
I guess if Carl's coming back, that's the problem. That's the point.
Okay, Carl, are you going to be able to come back or are you stepping out so that there'll be a break in your attendance at the meeting?
Yeah, actually, I'll just be a little mobile and but I'll as long as I could, I may just have to jump off for about 10 minutes or 15 minutes and I'll try and jump right back on.
Okay.
All right, hopefully, we can take a strategic break.
Yes.
That's fine.
So then.
I'll let you know when I have to. I'm gonna I'll try and do it after we like
break for the
get through something like changing items on the agenda like.
Good enough. So we have the three alternates are um. They are Commissioner Park, Commissioner Allen, and Commissioner Patel. Any one of you three would like to do something else this evening?
I don't want to be the first to say it, but I do have.
You can. I wouldn't think ill of you, Jeff.
Okay, I mean, listen, no problem. I can do it.
Go watch the Chiefs.
No, listen, I got all this paperwork here that gotta get done by Monday, so I can use that time to do the paperwork.
Okay.
Okay.
Nice seeing you. Thank you for coming.
All right, you're welcome. Good night.
Good night.
Okay, Francisco, are there any sunshine announcements that you'd like to share with us that need to be shared?
Yes. In accordance with the Open Publics Meeting Act, notice has been given to the Jersey Journal, the Jersey City Reporter, El Especialito, and posted with the city clerk on Friday, September 1st, 2023. We have the notices to be marked.
Exhibit B1 notices are marked.
Okay, thank you. Will everyone please stand for the flag salute? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America in the republic for which stands one nation, under God.
Indivisible, liberty, justice for all.
Okay, Iris, are there any staff members that need to be sworn in?
Yes, I can swear in Francisco, you are the only one. Oh, here's Tanya. Do you swear that the testimony you will provide this evening will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Thank you. Just take your names for the record, please. Starting with Francisco.
Francisco Espinoza.
Thank you.
Juan Marion. First.
Tanya, thank you. Did I hear a third voice or?
No, that was me saying. I thought Tanya was on mute for a moment.
Okay, thank you. Staff is sworn.
Okay, Francisco, any correspondence?
Let me share my screen. Okay. Other than the adjournments that are listed on the agenda for today, we have a new business item eight. This is case Z22-09. The address is 128 Glenwood Avenue. They have requested to carry to September 21st with preservation of notice. Item 12. This is case Z22-0-1, sorry, 107. The address is 68 Wayne Street. They've also requested to be carried to the September 21st regular meeting with preservation of notice. And lastly, item 14, this is case Z 2023-0007. The address is 81 to 83 Hutton Street. They've also requested to carry to September 21st, 2023 with preservation of notice. And the remaining items are moving forward for tonight.
Okay, so we have four items tonight to to discuss.
Yes, that's correct.
Are there any that we think we can move through quickly if there's just any extension of time or anything of that sort that we maybe should take a look?
So there aren't any extensions, but I did see an error in the agenda. So this is the first case, item number nine. It is for a minor site plan, it says, but it's supposed to be minor site plan with DNC variances. So that's the first item.
Okay. Um, and we went through the adjournment, the correspondence and the adjournments. We've already, no, the adjournments. Okay. All right, then, um. Okay. All right, we will start our first case and we will let people know that we will not go open any new cases past 10 o'clock tonight. Okay, all right. So if we want to, please promote our first case, case number seven, Z22047 for the site plan. Okay, Cordell Roden.
Promoting Stephen Joseph.
Okay, okay. Okay.
Good evening, everybody. Stephen Joseph for the applicant. We do have two experts this evening, Jeffrey Lewis and Carolyn Still. If we go ahead and get them them promoted. While we're doing that, can we confirm notices are received and we'll mark that into evidence?
Yes, Mr. Joseph, we have your affidavit, your proof of service, your notice of publication. So Iris, we're going to mark that as A1 for this application.
Yes, A1 is received and marked.
Thank you.
Wonderful. Stephen Joseph of Castano Quigley Trami for the applicant. This is 192 Cambridge Avenue. It's a oversized lot. Almost 4,000 square feet of site area, significantly larger than a standard lot in the R1 zone. It's located between South Street and Congress Street. The applicant is proposing a new three-story building with three dwelling units and three parking spaces. In order to accomplish this, we need minor site plan approval. Variants for use, one and two family homes are permitted in the R1, proposing a multifamily, three units, front yard landscaping variance and a driveway width variance. Like I said, we have two experts. We have Jeff Lewis, our architects, Carolyn Still, our planner. Let's get Jeff sworn in and we could take a look at the plans.
Hey, Jeff. I apologize. You cannot see me, but I am here. Do you swear that the testimony you will provide this evening will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
State your full name, please, by your last.
Jeffrey Lewis, L E W I S.
Thank you. Witness is sworn.
Okay. Jeff, if you could share your screen, let's make sure you have permission to do that.
I guess just before I start, I'll verify that my license is active and in good standing in New Jersey.
And I would ask the board accept Jeff's qualifications. He's been qualified before the board in the past.
Yes, we accept his qualifications.
Thank you.
Okay, I'm gonna start my screen stairs. Stephen, can you just tell me when it comes up because it's a little.
Yeah, let's say it's starting. It's not up yet. There we go. All right, we're good.
Okay, great. Okay. Hello, everyone. So 192 Cambridge Avenue, as Stephen mentioned, this is an oversized lot. It is 100 feet deep, but we're on average about 39 feet wide. I wanted to start showing just the photos on the right here. The photo in the center is is looking at our property. We have an existing two-story building on the site and then a driveway over to the right side. The buildings above are to our left. This is 194 Cambridge and 196. And then the photo on the bottom is showing the right side building. This is located at the corner of South Street in Cambridge. And it's located on the front property line. Here, we're looking at the existing site plans, and I'm going to zoom in a little just because these are a little small. I want to make clear a few things. So first of all, we are clearing the entire site. And what that includes is demolition of the existing building as well as the existing stoop. And the building in the stoop, you can see protrude out into the public right of way. So that's something that we'll be remedying. Also, we're going to be removing all of the asphalt and concrete on the site. Currently, the site has 100% lot coverage. Our new number after improvements will be around 65%, so in conformance with the R1 and then some. And the last thing I want to really bring into focus here is we have an existing curb cut that is 13 and a half feet wide. And we will be bringing that more in line with the allowable 10-foot curb cut, excuse me. So here, I'm sliding down to our proposed site plan. And I'll start right there at the curb cut where that 13 and a half foot curb cut has become a new 10-foot concrete curb. We're also doing a new concrete curb entirely. And after that, coming in, we have a five-foot wide paver strip with one new street tree. Then after that, the rest of the public right of way will be a concrete sidewalk, which is also new and it's about nine and a half feet wide. Moving on to our property, first of all, our building is set back nine feet and that's set back to match the building next door to us at 194 Cambridge. Starting there at that corner on the north, we have a permeable paver walkway, which leads to the main building entry. In the center of our building, we have a private yard, which is dedicated to apartment number one. So this yard has a permeable paver patio and then that's surrounded by some shrubs as a buffer and then a 36-inch-high aluminum fence. Um. Then lastly, on the left here, we do have an asphalt driveway, which leads back to our parking area. Looking at the parking, we have one space located in a garage straight ahead and then two spaces, which are tucked underneath the building. So three spaces for three apartments. Also, in this parking area, we have a fairly large trash and recycling room. And we also have entry to that building lobby. There's a second entry here, so you can enter it from the front of the building and also from the parking area. Looking to the back of the property, we have an alley alongside the garage leading to the backyard. The backyard is entirely dedicated to apartment number two. Back here, we have a lawn area, which includes one new tree. And then also a large permeable paver patio, which is surrounded by shrubs and then all enclosed with a six-foot-high wood fence. Now I'm going to move to the floor plans and start walking through these. So starting at the bottom left here, as I mentioned, we have a building lobby, which is accessed both from the street at the front here and then also from the parking area right here. In this lobby, we have the stair and we also have our sprinkler closet, as this will be a fully sprinkled building. Um, then the rest now, after that, I'd like to just move on to apartment number one. The entry to apartment number one is located right here on the first floor. This apartment is a three-bedroom, two-and-a-half-bath apartment. It's 1,335 square feet in total. So on the ground floor, you enter and first of all, you have access directly outside to that private yard that I mentioned. Besides the private yard, we also have a half bath, some utilities, our bedroom, which can also be used as an office space. We see it as a fairly versatile space. And then, of course, our stair up to the second floor. Sliding over onto the second floor plan, the stair comes up here. And the rest of this apartment is the large living, dining, kitchen area in the front of the building. Then two bedrooms, two baths, including a master suite in the back, as well as a utility closet with a stackable washer dryer. Staying over here on the second floor, I want to talk about apartment number two. This apartment is a three-bedroom, three-and-a-half-bath apartment. It's 1,610 square feet in total. It's entered from the staircase on the second floor. And we have this hallway, which has a access to a closet, a half bath, and some utilities. And then leads to the back of the building where we have an open living, dining, kitchen with a balcony off the back and then a staircase, which goes actually up and down. So going coming down first to the first floor, that stair leads you to a small den area. This den has the doors, which lead directly to that backyard outside, so it provides access to the yard. There's also a door directly from that garage, which is which is dedicated to apartment number two, directly into the den. And then lastly, on this floor, we have a full bathroom and a small bedroom. I mentioned that this stair also goes up to the third floor. So I'll show that section of the apartment. It's actually located here in the back of the building. On this floor, we have a nice laundry room and or laundry closet, excuse me. And then we have two bedrooms and two baths, including a master suite, and once again, a rear balcony off of that master suite. Lastly, here, we have apartment number three. This apartment is two bedrooms and two baths. It's a total of 1,190 square feet. It's located on the third floor entirely. We have the living, dining, kitchen area in the front. In the back, we have again two bedrooms, two baths, utility closet with washer dryer. But lastly, this apartment also has a private stair going from the apartment internally up to the roof, where they have a private roof deck. This roof deck is 770 square feet. It is set back on all four sides from the building elevations. On the left side, we're using that space for the air conditioning condensers. On the other three sides, we're using that space for green roof trays. And we have a total of 965 square feet of green roof trays on the roof here. Okay, now here we are on the building elevations. I want to start here on the front elevation. We do have on the sides, two brick bays on the side of the front elevation. The brick that we're using is a smooth ebony brick. However, the main building finish are light gray fiber cement panels. We're using them on the center of the building here. We're also using them in those brick bays as accents between the windows. And then lastly, we're using the fiber cement panels on the cantilevered bays that are protruding from the side of the building. Um. We also have black fiberglass cornice at the top of the building, black frame windows and doors, and also a black aluminum rail here at the ground floor, closing that yard. Sliding over to the right, we have the south elevation. This is the elevation facing the driveway and obviously facing the south. We did try to provide as many windows as we could here so that we can get natural light into these apartments, because this is our south-facing elevation. We do have, as I mentioned, two bays on this side. They protrude about three feet out and they're finished in those fiber cement panels, the same ones that we're using on the front. The rest of this building is finished on this side with light gray vinyl siding. Also, we have balconies. You can see off of the rear as well as two Juliet balconies in the living room of apartment number two. Those balconies are also going to be black aluminum railing balconies. Sliding down here to the rear elevation, this has the same finish as the side, so light gray vinyl siding. And as I just mentioned, the black aluminum railings. And then lastly, we have the north elevation. This elevation is built up against 194 Cambridge. We're both on the property line for a majority of the building. However, in the front, 194 Cambridge does step in three feet. So where our wall is exposed here, we'll be finishing our building with a light gray vinyl siding. Okay, um, thank you so much for your time. That actually will conclude my presentation of of this building. I'm happy to either answer questions now or I know we have Carolyn coming up. I can wait until after she speaks. That's up to you.
We can. We'll wait until after Carolyn speaks.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Wonderful. Let's get Carolyn sworn in. There you are.
Hello.
Mr. Worstall, do you swear that the testimony you will provide this evening will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Please state your full name.
Carolyn Worstall, W O R S T E L L.
Thank you. Witness is sworn.
Great. And Carolyn, your license is current and in good standing?
Yes, it is.
Carolyn's been here many times before. Board accepts Carolyn's qualifications.
Yes, we accept her qualifications.
Thank you. All right, great.
Apologies. Um, so getting into it, we're here this evening for a D1 use variance for this project as it's a proposed three-family use in the R1 district, which only permits one and two family as well as two very, two minor bulk variances for the front yard landscaping and for the driveway width. So looking at that D1 use variance, which is permitted in particular cases and for special reasons, I'm looking at whether or not the site is particularly suitable to accommodate the proposed use. If the proposed use is consistent with the development of the surrounding neighborhood and that the proposed use can be reconciled with the zoning ordinance. I think that this project is can meet all of those criteria and meet that test. For this D1 use variance, this site is particularly suitable for this proposed three-family use. It's an oversized lot. It's 3,909 square feet. So it's much larger than your typical lot in R1 district. And actually, will allow this property to have with the three family, the three units, to have a density of 33.5 units per acre. So that's actually less than the implied density for permitted two-family home on a typical 2,500 square foot lot, which is 35 units per acre. So the density here is actually right in line with what you would typically find in the R1 for a permitted two-family home. Additionally, a three-family dwelling is in character with the 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 neighborhood and in similar scale. We're not asking for any bulk variances in terms of height or setbacks or coverage. So the the building itself is completely conforming with regard to those standards and is in character with the type of development you see throughout the neighborhood. There are multiple three-family, multi-family, three-family homes throughout the neighborhood, including the adjacent property at 194 Cambridge Avenue, which is a three-family unit. Um, and additionally, the when we look at these bulk variances, as I mentioned, there's there's only two that we're seeking this evening. The first is for that minimum front yard landscaping. This project is proposing 20% or 70 square feet of the front yard to be landscaped. This this project is proposing a driveway that's going to occupy about 27% or 93 square feet of that front yard. And then the rest of it is primarily going to be for the separate residential entry and for that proposed private patio in the front yard, which will occupy about 55% of the front yard. So we are proposing some uses in those front yards that will provide for outdoor space that'll be dedicated to that first unit. This project, even though we're asking for this this deviation, overall, this project brings this front yard area into greater conformity with the R1 standards. Because we are actually eliminating the existing structure itself encroaches into the the sidewalk. So we're actually providing a conforming front yard setback where the building today actually sits forward of the lot line. So we're we're creating a front yard where none exists today. And then we are providing, you know, some landscaping that will really improve that street frontage with the planters that are going to be around the the proposed patio. And then overall, the project itself brings this lot into conformity with lot coverage. Right now, it's 100% lot coverage and this will be bringing it down to approximately 65% lot coverage, which is less than the maximum permitted, which is 85% in the the zone. So overall, I think this project really brings this this lot in the front area into greater conformance and really presents presents a really attractive streetscape and frontage for this property. And then finally, the other bulk variance we're requesting is for the driveway width. We're proposing a width of 10 feet and 4 inches, where 10 feet is the maximum permitted. So this is really a very de minimis request and just provides just a little bit of extra width to provide for vehicular clearance to and from the subject property. So that that's the variance we're requesting for that driveway. The curb cut itself is going to be conforming. It is just for the driveway. I think overall, this project advances the municipal land use law. You know, we're granting the variances will guide an appropriate use and development of the site. This is a residential use in a residential district and it'll be at a density that is consistent with the the underlying implied density that you would find in the R1 district. And it will prove it will help to secure from safety from flood and other natural man-made disasters consistent with purpose B. We are providing here green roof and permeable pavers and reducing that overall lot coverage to less than the maximum permitted. So overall, this project brings this this much more groundwater management and mitigation and permeability to the site than what is there today, which is 100% coverage. And then lastly, consistent with purpose I, I think this project promotes the desirable visual environment that we're seeking by, again, removing encroachments into the right of way, by adding the new street tree and the new landscaping in that front yard area and really improving the the street scape for this section of the block. Looking at negative criteria, I think these requested variances will not result in substantial detriment to the general welfare. Again, this is providing a new housing option in the R1 district that is consistent in scale in density with the existing standards for the R1 district. We're not requesting any bulk variances that put this out of scale with with the character of the neighborhood. And we're again, we're not, this won't be a substantial impairment to the intent and purpose of the zone plan and zoning ordinance. Because as I said, it overall complies with requirements for bulk for a residential use in this district. It's providing that compliant front yard setback, side yard setbacks, rear yard setbacks, building height, building and lot coverages. So overall, this structure is substantially compliant with the the bulk requirements of the R1 district. So I really think that overall, this project meets the necessary criteria in order for the variances to be granted. So if anyone has any questions, I'm happy to speak further, but that's the rest of my testimony.
We're just gonna hold questions to receive if there are any public comments. Okay. Thank you for your presentation. Francisco, is there is there anyone present from the public who's looking to make any sort of comments?
Um, at this time, I do not see any hands raised.
Okay.
If there's anyone out there that wishes to make a comment, please raise your hand at this time. But yeah, I don't see any hands.
Okay, so I guess that closes out the public portion of this meeting if they want to make any comments. And I'm going to ask the commissioners if they have any comments or questions that they would like to make. Does anyone have any comments, questions?
Seems good.
Coral?
Nope. Seems seems well thought out. Thank you.
Okay, does the staff have any comments they would like to make?
So I think Ms. Worstall did a great job of summing up the project in general. One thing I did want to show the board for a visual is just what is so this is my staff report. It is on the data portal. Didn't want to just show the board a visual representation of what the unit analysis on the block is currently. As you can see, this is Cambridge between South and Congress Street. The area in question today is in the dotted red line. Or it's very consistent to what is next to it. So next these are three units in the area, green units, anything that doesn't have a color is single family. You can see the area is very mixed in terms of you know, the unit counts it has. So I think I would agree with Ms. Worstall in saying that it does meet the negative and positive criteria. And for this, staff recommends approval with conditions outlined in my staff report.
Okay. Are there any questions at this time? Did any of the commissioners think of anything they might want to ask at this time? If not, If not, I am asking for a motion uh, to vote on case Z two-two dash zero four seven.
I made the motion.
Hey, can I get a second motion?
Second.
Um, I'm sorry, before, before you vote, I just wanna say that the applicant does agree to all the conditions listed in the, in the staff report for the record.
Good.
Okay, Mr. Espinoza, please take a vote.
And I'm sorry, who was the second?
Yeah.
There were a few.
I, there were a couple seconds.
I was a.
I was one.
Okay, you made the motion, Mrs. Becky. And I have uh, Commissioner Donnelly as a second.
Yeah.
Yes. Commissioner Shadine?
It's okay, it's okay.
Oh, to vote, Commissioner Shadine.
Okay, can we take the vote?
Is that a yes? Or? Commissioner Shadine?
Yes.
Commissioner Patel?
Yes.
Commissioner Park?
Yes.
Commissioner Boyle?
Yes.
Commissioner Zablicky?
Yes.
Commissioner Donnelly?
Yes, with conditions.
And Chair Coyle?
Yes.
Motion.
I, I just wanna add one, one thing that I really uh, admire the design. It was very nice and uh. There's a lot of things I've never seen before or uh, or I see. It's a good design, very good. Thank you.
And they didn't try to go overboard. So.
So, here is all in favor, with conditions.
Thank you everyone.
Thank you all.
Good luck.
Okay, our next case is Z two-three dash zero zero four. Uh, which is sixty-four dash seventy Oakland Avenue and seventy-seven Fleet Street. Um, can we promote Mr. Lean and any of his other expert witnesses?
Good evening, everyone. Can you hear me?
Yes.
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 Allison Casetto with Connell Foley. Oh, Mr. Harrington is here. I just wanted to make sure he was settled. Before uh, we start bringing up the witnesses.
Uh, yes, uh, thank you, uh, thank you, Allison. Um, yeah, for the record, Charles Harrington of Connell Foley, on behalf of the applicant, um. My witnesses, if you could promote um, tonight are um, Anthony Vandermark, I see him up here already, uh, Eric Hough. And uh, Carolyn Wurstel again.
I, I just have a question, I guess, for um, Mr. De Paglia. It says on mine, attorney Thomas Lean, is this just representing he's with that firm or am I with the?
Yeah, Tom Lean is with uh, Connell Foley, yes.
Thank you.
That's right, yeah, Tom, you know, Tom uh, worked on the application and, and I, actually, he's presently on vacation.
Good for him. And, and Miss. We have your notices and your affidavit and proof of service. Your notice of publication, so we're gonna mark this iris as A one for this application.
A one is received and marked.
Okay, thank you. Well, um, I'll jump right in with the, an overview of the proposed um, project uh, being presented tonight. Uh, this, this property is um, it's located in the R one zone, but it's, it's uh, we believe it's uh, unique and, and suitable for the proposed development that we're. Gonna present tonight. Um, it has three street frontages, it, it fronts on Fleet Street, Oakland Avenue, and then uh, Route one thirty-nine. So it's right on, on the outside uh, edge of, of the, what's, what is the, the R one zone um, next to the highway. Um, we are, um, it is oversized at sixteen thousand four hundred and thirty-six feet, we're at. A minimum lot size in the R one zone is twenty-five hundred square feet, so you'd have a twenty-five by a hundred lot is your typical lot in the uh, R one zone, according to the zoning. Um, we are uh, proposing a mixed-use building, um, so. By mixed use, it, it would, um, it is proposing to have a retail component um, on the ground floor. At the corner of Oakland and Route one thirty-nine, uh, an office component next to that. Uh, the lobby to the residential, as uh, the Mr. Vandermark will take you through, is, is uh, fronting on, on Fleet Street. And then it would have thirty-six, I'm sorry, uh, sixty-six residential units, seven of which uh, would be affordable. Uh, units um, consistent with the inclusionary zoning ordinance of, of the city, so. The sixty-six times, times ten percent is uh, rounds up to seven, uh, and uh, providing for fifty parking spaces. Um, so we are seeking uh, D variances uh, with regard to uh, the proposed use and, and the height. Um, as part of the project, you'll see, it is a, a staggered building in that it is, it's a four-story along uh, Fleet Street. Then it bumps up uh, to five stories, kinda as you turn the corner onto Oakland. And then there's a six-story portion that fronts on uh, one, Route one thirty-nine. Um, we um, I know for the record, I, I, I don't know if, if uh, the public is here or not, but we did ha- have a meeting with the Sergeant Anthony um, Community Association. Uh, and as a result of that meeting, what you're seeing tonight is a result of that meeting and, and trying to address uh, their, their uh. Concerns um, and comments uh, regarding uh, the proposal. Uh, which ended up in reducing the height along Fleet Street and, and some additional um, components that uh, Anthony Vandermark will walk you through. So, um, with that being said, I'll jump right in, I have, as I said, I have three witnesses here, if uh, uh, there was a traffic report. Um, prepared too, um, so Mr. Klein, you know, if there are any traffic issues, we, we can address those later, but. Um, I'm going to move right into it with uh, Mr. Howe to, to uh, walk you through the uh, the site.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Howe. Do you swear that the testimony you provided this evening will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you, state your full name, please, spell your last.
Uh, my name is Eric Hoog, H O U G H.
Thank you. Witness sworn.
Okay, thank you. Now, I see that I botched uh, Mr. Hope's name.
Oh, it's okay.
I'm thinking of Charlie Howe, uh, old Dodgers pitcher.
Ah, knuckleballer, yes.
So, yeah, yeah, Eric, if you, i- if you can share your screen and, and walk us through.
Yes.
The site.
All right, uh, the site is located at sixty-four to seventy Oakland Avenue and seventy-seven Fleet Street. Uh, which is block six, eight, zero, six, lots one and two, and twenty-five through twenty-seven. The property area is approximately sixteen thousand four hundred and twenty square feet or zero point three eight acres. The site has frontage uh, along three roadways, uh, Route one thirty-nine to the south. Oakland Avenue to the west and Fleet Street to the north. As far as the existing site conditions, uh, there is one brick garage along Route one thirty-nine. A three, two and a half story. Uh, framed dwellings along Fleet Street. And uh, there is one brick garage. And a two-story framed dwelling along Fleet Street. Uh, the existing site is mostly covered by the structures described with limited grass areas for an impervious coverage of sixty-two percent. Uh, it is proposed. I'll just switch over to the site plan here. It is proposed to remove all the existing site features to construct a new mixed-use building. Uh, the architect for this project, who's gonna testify after me, uh, can go over the zoning as well as additional building features. But the proposed building will consist of sixty-six residential units. Office space and a ground floor cafe. Access to the parking garage is provided uh, by a proposed sixteen-foot wide driveway on Fleet Street. Uh, this will be the only access driveway to the site. Uh, there will be new curbing and sidewalks provided along all three frontages. With new street trees as well. As you can see here, there's three street trees on each of the frontages, so three on Route one thirty-nine. Three street trees on Oakland Avenue and three street trees along Fleet Street. Oh, as far as the grading is concerned, I'll switch over to the grading. Plan, uh, the, the site is generally flat. Uh, at approximately elevation ninety-five in the front curbing and elevation ninety-seven within the site. Uh, this existing grading of the site will essentially remain. As far as the drainage, the proposed development will increase the impervious area, uh, impervious coverage by approximately. Six thousand two hundred and ninety-seven square feet. So to account for this increase, a detention basin. Is proposed located beneath the parking area. Hmm. Uh, this will collect the roof runoff and connect to the existing combined sewer in Fleet Street. And as far as the utilities, there will be a new sanitary connection. From Oakland Avenue and new gas and water connections from street, uh, Fleet Street, uh, for the proposed building. Uh, so that's really, there's really limited civil testimony for this. But that really concludes my testimony. Uh, I'm here to answer any questions now or uh, after the other witnesses?
We'll wait until the other uh, expert witnesses.
Okay, thank you. So with that said, I'm, I'm gonna move on to uh, Mr. Vandermark.
Well, Mr. Vandermark. You are on mute, but I will. See, there you go.
Well, thank you very much.
Yeah, very welcome. Uh, do you uh, swear that the testimony you will provide this evening will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
State your full name, please, spell your last.
Sure. Anthony Vandermark, Vandermark V as in Victor, A N D E R M A R K, principal of the architectural firm of MBMK Architecture.
Thank you. Witness sworn.
Okay, and um, and qualified as a expert in architecture?
Yes, Mr. Vandermark's been here numerous times, presuming his license is current and things like that, correct?
Yes, thank you, Mr. De Paglia, it is current.
Good, great. And just for the record, if uh, it was um, earlier, Mr. Hoff, uh, has he been qualified as, as an expert as well? I, I don't recall.
I don't recall either, but I, but we, we can qualify him, we, I think he, he did qualify.
Yeah, I, I, Eric, I don't know if you recall that.
I thought, I thought I did.
Okay.
But. I am currently licensed in the state of New Jersey and I've testified before many boards in the state of New Jersey, among this one, I believe, uh, once, maybe twice.
Thank you. So I'd ask just, I'm sorry if I, if it's been done already, but I'd ask if Mr. Hoff be uh, qualified as uh, an expert in civil engineering?
Yes. We accept his qualifications, sorry.
Thank you. Okay, Mr. Vandermark, the floor is yours.
Uh, well, thank you very much, Mr. Harrington. I will share my screen.
And Anthony, are we going to mark this? Is it a slide deck that we're gonna mark as A two?
Uh, yes, this is a uh, slide deck, let's mark this as A two. Um, there's a few different exhibits in here uh, that were added to the filing set, um, so let's mark this as A two.
And how many sheets does it consist of?
Uh, it consists of thirty slides and I hope not to use all thirty of them.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you very much.
Uh, good evening, board, and uh, I am very excited to be here tonight. Uh, I think we have a great project, um, as Mr. Harrington. By Mr. Howe had previously stated, we have a sixty-six unit project here. Um, but a tiered elevational design between four, five, and six stories. Um, here's the cover page and we predominantly have a, a masonry and. Um, aluminum clad uh, facade system on the exterior of the building that I'll talk about a little bit later. Um, just to give you some context. To tell you where we are. Um, again, we have uh, a hundred and thirty-two feet. Uh, a frontage on Fleet Street, uh, that runs east to west. We have a hundred and thirteen feet on Oakland Avenue, again, that runs north to south, two-way, and then we have one thirty-nine with a hundred and ten feet, eleven inches. Again, that runs uh, east to west with the two-lane highway. The overall square footage, uh, again, is sixteen thousand four hundred and thirty-six square feet, equivalent of point three eight acres. A very large uh, parcel uh, for the R one zone, but as you can see. Uh, we are on uh, quite a great deal of frontage on Route one thirty-nine. Uh, as well as Oakland and Fleet Street, very large parcel uh, for the R one. Just walking around the existing conditions. Uh, Route one thirty-nine facing east, uh, we have a slightly larger parcel uh, on the corner of the intersection of Route one thirty-nine in Oakland Avenue. Uh, it has a small uh, kind of triangular shaped uh, side yard. Uh, one mature tree, and then it has a pre-existing curb cut uh, with a masonry garage that fronts Route one thirty-nine. Um, taking you to slide number three. We have. The pre-existing curb cut around Route thirty-nine and uh, since to be removed uh, as part of this application. Again, a three-garage bay with a curb cut. Being removed as part of this presentation. Slide number four, the corner of Fleet Street and Oakland Avenue. Again, a, a sizable side yard for the two-story wood frame structure that faces Oakland Avenue. Um, as you walk down uh, Fleet Street, uh, facing west, uh, we have, again, a four-car. Uh, one-story masonry garage uh, with a sizable curb cut. That will be removed as part of this application, um, and reduced down to a sixteen-feet in width. Uh, we think this will be. Uh, a plus-one, uh, as far as added cars, uh, to the uh, Fleet Street, uh. Uh, basically, uh, sidewalk and curb line. Uh, the two existing white uh, wood frame structure is part of this uh, project that's due to be removed. The uh, centrally located uh, orange brick. Uh, with a single car there in the driveway is not part of this application that's pre-existing. The Oakland Avenue facing south, uh, as you can see, again, sizable yard, uh, si- sizable side yard in Oakland Avenue, predominantly grass. Um, again, an anomaly in the R one, it is a little bit larger uh, than the average twenty-five hundred square foot site, and typically you would have two structures on this parcel. Just taking you down low, again, Oakland Avenue facing north. Um, you know, a, a series of kind of mixed-use buildings, uh, as you go to the north when you cross over uh, Fleet Street. And the red highlighted areas are uh, aerial diagrams of the parcel, um, as you can see. Uh, uh, you know, north, uh, and also east. Uh, you know, a bit of a, a oddly situated site, uh, with a lot of different uses uh, going on uh, at these three street frontages. Slide here, uh, actually facing west, uh, on Fleet Street. In the foreground to the left-hand side, a two-story uh, wood frame structure part of this project to be removed, again, the masonry garage also to be removed. In the foreground to the right-hand side, uh, we have two-two-family uh, setback uh, off of the sidewalk line, as you can see, approximately eighteen feet. Then with a curb cut with what looks to be a two-story wood frame, uh, single apartment, and then really you have the side facade of the Oakland-facing. Uh, uh, northern portion of the street. So a little bit of a mixed bag, and as you turn, uh, and looking east on Fleet Street. In the foreground is a pre-existing two-family at three stories uh, with a ridge line, and then you can see we have. A series of uh, red brick masonry buildings, one happens to be a, a commercial building, I think the other one is a converted uh, uh, industrial building at some point. But there is a many different uh, varied structure types uh, here on Fleet Street, and I think our proposal and our presentation uh, shows you that. You know, we're looking to pick up uh, some common elements uh, that occur on this street, uh, you know, as part of this application. Um, but again, it's not a predominantly R one to uh, kind of street frontage where you have a series of one and two families all up and down Fleet Street, that doesn't occur. Overall, in general, uh, uh, of the project of the sixty-six units, um, we are proposing fifteen studios. Twenty-eight one bedrooms, eleven one bedrooms plus den, six two bedrooms and six three bedrooms as part of this application. As previously stated, we are proposing uh, a mixed-use uh, residential structure, which again requires uh, a D variance for use. Um. And Carolyn Wustal, our planner, will get into this further, uh, as we work into this presentation. This planned area, uh, on Route one thirty-nine, uh, was part of a master plan, uh, revision study. Um, it's part of the journals, excuse me, the Jersey City Lower Heights Small Area Vision Plan. And when they talk about that in the Small Vision Plan, they talk about, uh, five-story structures, uh, on one thirty-nine. Um, you know, with offices, retail, restaurants and medium multifamily up to five stories. So what we're proposing this evening kind of falls in line with the future vision of what may be, uh, the future of this area. Okay, so let's keep that in mind. Going back to the overall projects, uh, we are proposing fifty parking spaces, thirty-three bicycle parking spaces with four outdoor bicycle parking spaces. Again, we have a retail cafe space on the corner of one thirty-nine and Oakland Avenue, and that's one thousand two hundred and forty-five square feet. We're proposing a mid-block on Oakland Avenue office space of one thousand one hundred and thirty-seven. The building is tiered and designed. We have three different heights to this building. Facing Fleet Street, we're at forty-four feet, was, which is consistent with the R1, uh, maximum height, uh, to a bridge. So again, forty-four feet in Fleet Street. On Oakland Avenue, fifty-three feet, eight inches, and on one Route one thirty-nine at six stories, sixty-three feet and four inches. The building and footprint area tiers, and it also gets smaller as you get higher. So base of the building is eighty-eight point five percent. Um, that takes you all the way up to the fourth floor at seventy-eight point four percent. The fifth floor steps back at fifty-one point nine percent, and the sixth floor is at thirty-three point six percent. We are proposing a rooftop amenity at seven point four percent, which is, uh, consistent with the land use development ordinance. The proposed fifty parking spaces are at point seven six, so we're not quite at one-to-one, but we are at a very high ratio as part of this proposal. Our civil engineer, Mr. Howe, has already taken us through the pre-existing conditions of this. Um, what we're here to propose again is a tiered structure. We have three different tiers, and one of the things. That came up as part of the, uh, community meeting with Sergeant Anthony was. The site does have a unique, uh, uh, side yard positioning, uh, with green space, uh, with landscaping. And our building originally had, uh, some, uh, larger proposed lock coverage. Taking in consideration with their comments was what we actually pulled back. We reduced the amount of lock coverage on the first floor and we increased the amount of green space on the overall project. So we are proposing nine new street trees. We are proposing all-new curving and sidewalk. We are proposing, uh, new intersection ADA ramps. We're proposing bio swells. Uh, at both Fleet Street that interconnects tree planters and then also Oakland Avenue. One thirty-nine, we now think it was appropriate for a bio swell system. Uh, bio swell system, uh, for the board is something that actually collects, uh, rainwater runoff. Uh, goes through a pipe that interconnects, uh, this planter box and then slowly releases back into the, uh, uh, back into the ground, um, and the soil. We have three different roof planes. We have at Fleet Street. We have a perimeter planter at the upper part of the roof. Uh, what we really wanted to do was to increase, uh, the amount of landscaping on this property, even though it, it is at eighty-eight percent impervious coverage. As Mr. Howe previously stated, we are proposing a groundwater detention system. On top of that, we have, uh, a series of extensive green roofing areas. As part of this application. Uh, at the lower portion, we have a thousand and three, uh, square feet extensive green roof. Uh, we have seven hundred and seventy-five square feet of extensive green roof at the inner courtyard at the second floor. And then at the fifth floor, we have three hundred and fifty-five square feet of extensive green roof. That is the equivalent of eight percent of the overall roof area of the project. We have also increased the amount of perimeter planter area, which you're going to see in plan, and then also in, in elevation, how this has impact. On the project, and that total overall roof area of landscape planning area, including this large portion. Uh, fronting Route one thirty-nine is one thousand six hundred and ninety-three square feet. That's the equivalent of twelve percent. So in total, the amount of green roof area, landscaping and extensive green roof area is twenty percent of the overall roof area. We do have a series of, of, uh, different roof decks at different levels. We'll get into that with the floor plans. As you can see also in plan here at the first floor at the sidewalk level, we have a planner facing Oakland Avenue. That fronts the lobby, the office space and also the retail. We are proposing a sixteen-foot wide curb cut, and that's approximately thirty-two feet. Off of the easternmost property line, and I'll get into that in the next slide at the first floor plan. Post-first floor plan, if we start page north, left-hand side, uh, we, this project, uh, of its size and side area requires an electrical transformer vault. So that is fronting, uh, at the northeastern corner that is fronting Fleet Street. Then we have a sixteen-foot wide, uh, curb cut. That curb cut, um. Is setback, excuse me, the garage entry point from this curb cut is setback. Um, one of the comments. Uh, at the community meeting was that this curb cut was originally all the way to the eastern portion of the project. This curb cut has since been moved in, so it's not directly on top of that pre-existing two-family, which is to the east of this property. Also, the, uh, the original garage was pressed right up against the property line. So for pedestrian safety, we actually moved the garage door back within the building footprint. Uh, approximately eighteen feet, which is the length of a car. To provide, uh, pedestrian safety. Um, so this gives the driver and also the pedestrian, uh, a full car length of time. Uh, as they pull out of this garage. In addition to the setback safety of the garage door, we are providing an LED strip, uh, right at the sidewalk line. That will flash when the garage door, uh, actually is opened. We also have a warning indicator light, uh, that's building-mounted, uh, at eye level, and it also has an audible strobe. So we have two lines of safety, uh, as part of this, uh, proposed driveway apron. Um, and again, as Mr. Uh, Howe had previously stated, we have fifty cars, forty-eight which are on mechanical. Two ADA parking spaces and centrally located in the drive aisle, we have the stormwater detention system. As we come back, plan east. Here centrally located on Fleet Street, we have a gym space, uh, which is a many for the building residents only. We have a corner lobby space, um. For the residents. As part of the, uh, discussion with Sergeant Anthony. Again, the first floor was pressed all the way against the building line, almost at a hundred percent lock coverage. When you go back to the graphics. Of that, uh, the revision plan, uh, uh, study. They wanted the first floor to actually be set in, and they wanted some sidewalk and room space in between both the building line. And the curb line. So what we did, and it was part of the recommendation from Sergeant Anthony, was that we brought the building line in. And we created planters, uh, at the property line edge. So this furthers, uh, you know, really the principle of green area and space. So we moved the building line in five feet. We moved it in greater to the sawtooth of the building on Oakland Avenue, and again, you see street front, uh, facing planters. And then we brought it in again, uh, at Route one thirty-nine, an additional five feet, uh, to the cafe. And, uh, different utility spaces. At the corner of the property here, all the way, uh, to the southeast, we have an additional planter that's set, uh, within the building screen line. So, you know. The community came to us with, with comments and concerns, and we certainly feel like, uh, we've reviewed them. Uh, and we responded, I think, positively to, to, you know, bring this building. Uh, closer, uh, to what the long-term vision is, uh, you know, for this neighborhood. Just to show the board, um, this is a building section, uh, through the garage. On your right-hand side here, again, four stories at forty-four feet, which is consistent with the R1, uh, high point. Of a peaked roof. So we have three stories with a triple-tiered, uh, mechanically stacked garage system. Again, fifty cars in total. Uh, we have an, uh, an, an additional section here, uh, taken through Oakland Avenue, which is the five-story portion. As you can see, we have mechanical parking in section. Uh, just to, just to inform the board, um, this is a lift-slide system, so it is a non-vally, non-man system. So there's an empty hole, uh, within the puzzle, and what happens is, is that you trigger the garage door, sets the system in motion. And the empty, uh, garage stall, uh, for the mechanical parking system appears for you, and you pull into that, and then it reshuffles the deck. Taking you up to the second floor. Um, we have sixteen units on the second floor. We have a kind of a U-shaped building with a centrally located courtyard. Again, one of the comments by Sergeant Anthony was, is that they just did not want to look at. Open roof. They didn't want to look at open deck, so we created a substantial planter area. Uh, facing Route thirty-nine, so if you're walking down Route thirty-nine or driving down Route one thirty-nine. Really, you're gonna see a heavy landscaped, uh, roof area, uh, on the setback there. And again, at sixteen units on this floor, we have three studios and they range from four sixteen to five oh four. We have seven one-bedrooms at five-ten to six-ninety-five. We have three one-bedrooms plus den. At six hundred and eighty-three to nine-twenty-four. We have two two-bedrooms at seven-fifty-five and eleven-thirty-three. This floor has one three-bedroom at one thousand two hundred and ninety-seven square feet. Um, within the courtyard, we have a series of, uh, interior private, uh, areas with landscaping, an elevated landscape bed. That separates, uh, the common area, uh. Uh, roof deck area from the terrace areas, and you can see here we have an extensive green roof area that's facing the property line or the adjacent two-family beyond us. Proposed third and fourth floor are identical. Um, we have sixteen units on both of these floors. We have three studios, seven one-bedrooms, three one-bedroom plus den. One two-bedroom at seven hundred and fifty-five square feet and two three-bedrooms at eleven-eighty-four and twelve-ninety-seven. Um, so these two floors are identical. And as you get to the fifth floor. It now becomes roof area at Fleet Street. Um, the portion, uh, facing east. Uh, we have a large portion of extensive green roof at one thousand, uh, three square feet. Just to inform the board of what extensive green roof does, rainwater comes, it actually hits this landscaped, uh, roofing tray area. The water collects, uh, in this, it's, it's a moss or a sedum. Collects in this, uh, planter bed and then slowly releases to the roof drain and slowly releases back down to the detention system, which is located within the garage. That detention system fills up to a certain, uh, location and then drains out into the municipal system. So we have a, a series of, uh, green techniques here. Um, that the existing, uh, property does not have. Uh, we are making the stormwater runoff just that much better as part of this application. Again, uh, speaking of the fourth floor, we have a perimeter, um, landscaped. Uh, roofing area around the perimeter. People walking down Fleet Street should see the landscaping above the parapet line. Um, we have two individual private terraces off of the units, uh, at the fifth floor, onto the fourth floor roof. Again, they will not be visible from the street. The proposed sixth floor now sets all the way back to Route one thirty-nine. So we address Fleet Street, uh, at four stories. Oakland Avenue is proposed at five stories, and Route one thirty-nine is proposed at six stories. So when we say it's a six-story structure, we're only talking about the frontage at Route one thirty-nine. If you go back to the revision study, they talk about five stories. Now, do we think five stories was appropriate at Fleet Street? Probably not, considering the scale of those buildings. This is why we are at four stories at Fleet Street. Five stories, uh, at Oakland Avenue and six stories at Route one thirty-nine. Which consistently is five stories. However, we take, we took the height from Fleet Street and just added it to Route thirty-nine, which has the least amount of impact. Uh, on any of the adjacent streets. Just going back to the sixth floor. It has seven units, three studios, three one-bedrooms and one three-bedroom in eleven-thirty-two. We have our upper rooftop amenity. Again, it's just a little bit over seven percent of the overall roof area, nine hundred and fifty-seven square feet, and we have a. Upper outdoor roof terrace at two thousand five hundred and seventy-six. Again, with a perimeter landscaped area. The upper roof bulkhead will have mechanicals, uh, above the amenity space. These will be screened. Uh, you will not be seeing them from view, and they are located within the two-stair bulkheads. Okay, talking about the building design now, now going back to the exterior. Uh, this is a, a facade or the corner of Fleet Street in Oakland Avenue. Four stories on Fleet Street, so as you go left to right. Uh, we have a three-story masonry structure. We have a red masonry modular brick, full-size brick. Uh, that we think matches both the two families and the two industrial buildings, uh, that are a few lots down. Um, the pre-existing two-family adjacent to us on the east again is a red brick building, so we feel that this is consistent. Uh, with the color, uh, and texture, uh, uh, on Fleet Street. The winner, uh, the, in the inner window inset and then the top floor, it actually cut down the scale to four stories, is a gray, uh, aluminum composite material. The windows are black aluminum. They are inset within the composite material. Here, where my cursor is pointing again, is the, uh, driveway curb cut with the recess garage entry point eighteen feet, so there will be a full car length before you actually reach the sidewalk. We're proposing a series of wall sconces at the pier line. As you can see here, uh, a bio swell in the foreground. Street trees, again, nine, uh, in total, and the building line at the first floor is set back, uh, from the garage all the way around the corner and back to Route one thirty-nine. So you do have a little bit of an arcade, uh, a series of brick piers with the building line set back from it. We have a corner lobby, um, and as you can see, we have. A lot of, uh, aluminum and, uh, glazing, uh, on the Oakland first-floor facade. Office space in the middle, retail on the corner, uh, facing Route thirty-nine. The building is staggered in design and the predominant, uh, material on Oakland Avenue is aluminum composite material. We have a series of awnings, uh, that front both for the lobby, the office space and the retail space. However, they are open to below. This way, any of the landscaping will, uh, receive, uh, light, air and also water. The aluminum composite material has, uh, again, a, a separate terracotta color aluminum wrap, as you can see where my cursor was pointing. At the upper portion or at the roof line, as you can see. Um, the owner has given us, uh, the liberty of providing a perimeter landscaping around the parapet line. So we think, uh, not just will you see a coping line, you will see a softened edge at the top of the building, a green edge at the top of the building, and this is in direct response to. Um, the concerns, uh, that the Sergeant Anthony Neighborhood Group had had as part of this project. Again, facing Oakland, we have, uh, street trees with a bio swell, uh, so we think we have a healthy balance between, uh, both green area, uh, and also, uh, building line. Just showing you in two dimensions, again, four stories, forty-four, uh, feet in total height. As you walk your way up to the building, we have forty-four feet, we have fifty-three feet, eight inches on Oakland Avenue, and sixty-three feet, four inches. Uh, that happen to be facing Route one thirty-nine. Again, the second rendering of Fleet Street. This is a working building model of what we're actually proposing this evening. As you can see, the building steps from four stories to five stories to six stories. And we think this is proper, uh, uh, considering, uh, where the building is positioned. Okay, four to five to six. Top graphic, uh, Oakland Avenue. It goes from four to five and then steps up to six on the corner. Uh, again, aluminum, uh, curtain wall design at the building base. Uh, we have signage placeholders that are part of this application. Of course, they will be, um, in line with the current LDO requirements for signage. This is a, uh. A perspective rendering of the corner of Route one thirty-nine and Oakland Avenue. Building staggers and tiers from four to five to six. The Oakland Avenue is predominantly aluminum-clad material, including awning above the office and cafe. But as you can see, as you work down Route thirty-nine, we've returned back to the masonry and the interweave, uh, of the. Black aluminum-clad windows and aluminum composite material. We feel the composite material over the masonry caps the building, and as you can see at the building edge or at the top of the building. The landscape planters. Again, working model from six to five to four, the building is ramped up and down. Going back to the impact study, as you can see. The proportions of the building in the lower. The proportions of the building in the lower graphic um are consistent at four stories. They step up to five at Oakland Avenue and to six at Route Route one thirty-nine. Just in conclusion, the shadow study, which we have for uh three different or four different times of the year. Uh, the site is actually pretty well situated uh for shadow on the adjacent neighborhood, considering we are at the. It's really at the kind of. Uh, western edge uh of of, you know, Fleet Street at Oakland Avenue and one thirty-nine. We're casting pretty much uh the majority as east to south. Uh, you know, basically to west, we're casting the majority of our shadows onto the public right of way. Um, that's because it really is a peninsula of a property. So this concludes my presentation for tonight and I'm open for any questions.
I'm I'm assuming we're gonna wait until Ms. Wurstel is completed for any questions? I think you're muted.
That's correct. Yes, you're correct.
Wait, sorry about that.
No worries. Thank you. Okay, then I'm gonna bring up uh Ms. Wurstel. Uh, who has been previously qualified and and um accepted as an expert in planning in the prior application.
Yes, Ms. Wurstel, you have been previously sworn.
Yes.
You remain under oath.
Of course. Okay, um, so I think Anthony really did a great job presenting the application and really trying to. To set the stage here. Um, uh, this was a project that certainly evolved over time and we we really tried to address. Uh, those concerns of the neighbors. Um, I I think it made it an overall a better project. Um, we are here this evening for a D-one use variance uh for. Uh, a mixed-use and multifamily building uh in what is currently an R-one district. Um, and uh, as with previously stated, uh. For uh, D-one use variants can be granted uh for particular cases and for special reasons. Um, and again, looking at this, it it has to promote the general welfare. Uh, property has to be particularly suitable to accommodate the proposed use and the proposed use can be reconciled with the zoning ordinance. Um, additionally, the, you know, this is a, this is a building that is does not, um. That that is totally different than what you would typically find in a one- and two-family district. So there are a large number of, um. Uh, both variances uh that are subsumed within that use variance. Um, but overall, we'll we'll, I can talk about the bulk and and how we've tried to. Um, address bulk issues with this project. Um, I think that this project uh is, this site is particularly suitable. Uh, for a mixed-use and multifamily uh development. Um, because of its location, its size and orientation and overall the the area in which it is uh located. Um, so in terms of location, this property has um three frontages. It's a cap lot. Um, its primary frontage is along US Route one and nine, which is State Highway Route one thirty-nine. Um, and that's a four-lane divided highway. So that is a a very busy, active roadway. Um, it's not a typical street that you would find in an R-one district. Um, and correspondingly, there's a large mix of uses, including commercial, mixed-use and multifamily uses up and down that corridor. Um, so you know, I I believe a mixed-use and multifamily use is more appropriate along this corridor. Um, and that it really would serve as a transition and a buffer between what is a highly-traveled. Roadway um and the quieter residential neighborhoods to the north. Uh, furthermore, the property is is it's in a transit-oriented site. Um, it's it's not. Within uh the Journal Square redevelopment area, but it certainly is within what you would consider a transit-oriented development area. It's within walking distance. It's a just about a half mile or ten-minute walk to the Journal Square Transit Hub. Um, which would support higher density development. Looking at lot size and orientation, uh, this subject property is an irregularly shaped cap lot. Has the three front lines, one side lot line and one rear lot point. Uh, there's no lot line. It's a rear lot point. Um. As I stated, you know, it's it's got that frontage um on Route one and uh Route one thirty-nine, Oakland Avenue, and then the third being Fleet Street. Um, it's also an oversized lot. Um, we've already. Uh, mentioned it several times. It's over sixteen thousand square feet or uh about what, uh, zero point one-three acres. Um, so it's significantly greater than the minimum uh that you would find for a one- and two-family home uh in the R-one district. And I I think that because it's such a large site, it can really accommodate the impacts that you would typically expect with this type of development. We are able to provide a parking space for fifty off-street parking uh for cars. Uh, that's about uh. Zero point seven five or seven six uh spaces per unit. Um, so that's uh again, not one-to-one, but it is uh quite high. Um, and really it allows to have um a a large range of unit sizes. Um, there are studios. One bedrooms, one bedroom plus dens, two bedrooms, three bedrooms. So it really allows for a diversity of housing options with this larger footprint. And then again, there's overall, there's this access. Um, as mentioned, we are within a half mile of the Journal Square Transportation Center. Um, we are, there are a number of bus lines that run through this area. Uh, Routes eighty-seven, eighty-eight and one nineteen run along Central Avenue with a stop at Saint Paul's Avenue, which is approximately. Point one or two-minute walk west of the subject property. Uh, and then Route the the eighty-four, eighty-six and one twenty-three Route uh bu- bus lines run along Palisades Avenue. Uh, with stops at Saint Paul's Avenue, which is about uh point three miles or six-minute walk east of the subject property. So this really allows um there to be uh uh transit um options uh that can get. Um, residents to Journal Square, Hoboken, uh, New York City. Um, local hospitals, local shopping areas. Um, so there is a diversity of transportation uh that is within the the overall area. That would support a a higher density development and a mixed-use development. And then, uh, this project, there are other multifamily buildings within in the area, um, and it is consistent with the. Uh, those types of buildings. Um, this project is proposing sixty-six units. Um, there are other larger um developments in the area, uh, seventy-six Saint Paul's Avenue, which is at the corner of Saint Paul's in Oakland. So it's. Just about a block north of here has a fifty-five unit multifamily building. Um, forty-five Hopkins Avenue, uh, forty-five, yeah, forty-five Hopkins Avenue, which is at the corner of Hopkins Avenue and Baldwin. Uh, has a twenty-eight unit building. Uh, one sixty-five, one sixty-nine Saint Paul's Avenue, which is to the west of this site on on Route one thirty-nine. Um, is a fourteen-unit residential building. So there are a number of other uh multifamily residential buildings in this area. Um, and then I think the site is appropriate for that commercial use, uh, that mixed-use commercial use. Um, that is something that uh is uh appropriate for. Being on a pathway that people may traverse to get to Journal Square. Um, or uh, you know, it's it's on a corridor that has other commercial uses. So I think it's an appropriate location. For not only a multifamily use, but also for that mixed use. Um, we are subsuming several bulk variances within this use variance. Um, and I just wanna sort of go through some of some of these, the the setbacks. Um, so as you saw Anthony really sort of went through it, um, we are sort of providing. Sort of tiered setbacks throughout this property that really softens the building line. Um. Uh, along Oakland Avenue, the building is um. At that ground floor, we are setting back the building with those tiers and significant landscaping. Um, and then the upper floors again are set back. Um, uh, from the the property line. Um, so there is some significant setbacks. Along that, um, and it does open up the uh the streetscape for pedestrians walking along Oakland Avenue to have that additional space. Um. At, uh, let's see, um. Along Fleet Street, um, the building does have a a zero-foot uh setback uh on the upper floors. But at the ground floor, the building is stepped back along the the lobby and amenity space to provide the covered loja and landscaping at the street level. Which again, at for pedestrians walking along Fleet Street really sort of, again, helps to open up that sidewalk um and create that that sense of space. Um, and then uh this zero-foot setback uh along Fleet Street is uh consistent with the predominant setback. Um, on that block, um, there is uh that's established by the industrial use. Uh, which occupies the middle of the block and the side yard setback of the residential properties at the corner of Fleet Street and Baldwin Avenue. Um, so it really does create uh is consistent with the overall predominant setback of buildings along that block frontage. Um. And then along uh Route one thirty-nine. Um, again, we are providing a setback at that ground floor, providing for the loja and landscaping. Um, where, you know, the upper floors are in zero uh feet, but the that ground floor uh does have those stepbacks. That again creates that sort of open space, uh, and open feeling for pedestrians walking along Route one thirty-nine, which was a a concern of the community. Um. And then overall, additionally, there are several building stepbacks above um along the building at the uh rear. Uh, above the first, above the first floor, uh, we do have those stepbacks there. Um, as well as above the fourth floor along uh Fleet Street. And then again, the the stepbacks as Anthony has previously shown. Um, so the building really has uh numerous stepbacks and setbacks. That are trying to create um sort of that that open uh space down at the ground floor and then to get additional light and air at upper, upper floors. In terms of the lot coverage, um, a lot coverage of ninety-three percent is proposed, um. We are providing um significant onsite stormwater retention systems, as well as the significant amount of green roofing and landscaping. On the building's roof, all of which provide significant stormwater uh management benefits. Um, and so overall, I think this project really does provide uh significant benefits in terms of stormwater management. Um, and then. That the building coverage and the lot coverage really is at that ground floor. Above the ground floor, the building really does reduce its coverage. Um, the covered, the building coverage at the second floor is seventy-eight point four percent. Through the fourth floor and then it fifty-one point nine percent at the fifth floor and thirty-one point six at the sixth floor. So. Again, the the building does significantly reduce its lot coverage as it tears up, which was part of the design that Anthony uh discussed. Uh, and overall, just the the ground floor uh building coverage that it really allows for the building footprint that. Can provide a massing for um the parking garage that provides space for the fifty um parking spaces. As well as it allows for ground floor spaces for the office space, the commercials or the retail space at the corner. So it allows for um significant uh ground floor uses, which help to enliven that streetscape and and the corridor itself. Um. Uh, as mentioned, the the garage itself provides the fifty off-street parking spaces, which is uh at a rate of about. Zero point seven five, seven six, depending on how you you round um spaces per unit, which is uh. Pretty high. Um, and then there is access, the access to the garage. Uh, we are proposing a sixteen-foot wide curb cut, which will allow um sufficient space for um. Maneuvering and and for uh two-way uh drive aisle on on that. Um, and um. But as as mentioned, it's wider than you typically see in the R-one. Uh, but we are uh providing the the setback of the garage entrance, which really allows for there to be. Uh, sightlines for drivers exiting the garage onto the street. So we are providing that. As well as all the pedestrian warning lights uh and uh warning signals that really would help to uh provide a safer. Um. Driveway area and for that uh garage. Um, and additionally, we're we're providing a garage. We're we're asking for that curb cut there, but we are actually eliminating a curb cut on Route one thirty-nine. Um, and we're actually reducing the curb cut uh width on Fleet Street um and adding back the this on-street parking space. Um, so while we are, you know, that is a wider curb cut than typical, we are actually eliminating the number and the overall uh curb cut. Sizes for the overall site. Um, so again, that will help produce uh provide additional pedestrian safety on. Both Fleet Street and Route one thirty-nine. Um, in addition to that, those those, the those bulk variances. We are asking for a D-six height variance, um, which can be granted. Um, where uh where the. Uh, proposed project will promote a harmonious uh consistent visual environment while not offending the purposes of. The height restriction, which is namely light and air. Um, so the project uh proposes a overall building height of sixty-three feet, four inches and six stories. Uh, but that height is over on the Route one thirty-nine fa- uh. Facade of the building or or side of the building. Um, and the building, as as has been mentioned previously, is stepped back as we go north. Uh, so that the building along Fleet Street, which is the residential street. Um, is only is down to four stories and forty-four feet, uh, which is the maximum height permitted in the R-one district. Um, so really, this building has been designed with those setbacks to to promote that more harmonious and consistent visual environment within the neighborhood. Um, and providing and and trying to put the uh. The majority of the impacts, which is, you know, shadow impacts and latent air impacts, um, those are are. Pushed, you know, farther south away from those residential neighborhoods to the north. And really focusing them on the uh south side of the the project. Um, which also helps reduce, you know, the the shadow impacts as the additional height and the shadows. Can fall on our own building and less on the buildings across the street from us. Um, and uh. So that that, I think that with these tiers, um, I think that the uh height can be accommodated on this site. Uh, it is a very large site. Um, it is a uh. Uh, strong, um, or it's a very not strong, uh, it's a very busy quarter Route one thirty-nine. So the additional height here can help provide some buffer uh between what is a busy corridor and the more residential neighborhoods. And then again, it steps down. To that four stories and forty-four he- forty-four he- feet. Apologize, forty-four feet, um, where we are adjacent to those uh more residential, uh, the residential neighborhood on Fleet. Um, and I just, I also wanted to men- uh mention, you know, this project. Uh, we've tried to to really um. Take the uh recommendations of that Jersey City Lower Height Small Area Vision Plan and really try to. Uh, incorporate them into this um overall uh design and project. Uh, Anthony, you know, already mentioned it, um, but really the the small area vision plan um identified. Um, this corridor uh as an area that would be more appropriate for retail, restaurants. Offices and mid-scale multifamily uses with up to five stories. So. Uh, we are trying to incorporate some of those uh more commercial uses in this site. Um, and again, we we've tried to um. Keep that height, the additional height that we are resting on the um Route one thirty-nine side and. Keep it away, keep the extra bulk away from the more residential district to the north. Um, I think this project advances the purposes of municipal land use law. Um, it it will provide adequate light year and open space uh consistent with purpose D with the. Um, setbacks at the ground floor and the upper floors and the building stepbacks. Um, at the uh first floor at the rear with the um uh. Fourth floor and then fifth floor and six uh up to the sixth floor. So there are significant stepbacks that will help provide that light in here. Um, I think it's gonna promote an appropriate population density and concentration consistent with purpose E. Um, as mentioned, this is uh not your typical R-one uh block. Uh, it's right on Route one and thirty-nine and in close proximity to transportation and the Journal Square redevelopment. Uh, area and transportation hub. So it is uh can accommodate that additional density. And I think that this project really pro- promotes that desirable and visual environment, um. Uh, consistent with purpose I. Um, there's been uh significant uh landscaping is being proposed here on. Uh, the the street frontages, uh, you know, the the nine new street trees, the bioswells. There's landscaping being proposed at the ground floor for all three frontages. Um, so I I think that really uh it does, it will result in a a um key uh attractive. Uh, environment uh for pedestrians. And uh looking at the negative criteria, I think that this project will not result in substantial detriment to the general welfare. Um, the project uh is redeveloping these properties with a mixed use, which is uh more appropriate in scale. Along the Route uh one thirty-nine corridor. The height and bulk of the building is consistent uh and provides sufficient setbacks and stepbacks to provide light and air to adjacent properties. Um, and proposing significant landscaping along Oakland Avenue. Uh, as I said, new street trees, the new curbs, sidewalks. Uh, as I said, new street trees, the new curbs, sidewalks, uh bioswells, so very significant streetscape improvements along all three frontages. And then I think it mitigates um uh some of the stormwater impacts. Again, there's a large, you know, stormwater uh detention system in the proposed, as well as extensive landscaping and green roof being proposed as part of this project. And I don't see this as a substantial impairment to the intent and purpose of the zone plan. Um, it it advances the city's uh twenty twenty-one lower-height small vision. Small area vision plan and the twenty twenty-one master plan uh proposing. Uh, this mixed multifamily use here um on a corridor that is um um. Not typical of your R one, um, and has a can uh much more commercial and um uh. Character, um, and will provide, you know, a a great um. Gateway into the Heights neighborhood uh coming out of Journal Square up to the north. So I. I really think that this is a very attractive property or attractive development. Um, that advances the purposes of the lower heights uh smaller vision area plan and the master plan. Um, as well as providing for a new affordable housing, as well as housing that uh, you know, will meet the needs of a wide variety of households. Um, so overall, I think that the project can be, or the variances can be granted. And that both positive and negative criteria have been meant first uh for those use, D one use variance, the D six height variance. As well as the uh you the the bulk variances assumed within the use variance. Uh, so if anyone has any questions, I know that that was a large mouthful. I'm happy to answer them.
Okay, we're holding questions until after the presentations.
Okay, so that 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 would uh complete our presentation. As I I mentioned earlier, we do have our traffic engineer. Uh, here tonight. So in any event, there are any questions about traffic, he. He's not promoted yet, but he is, he is a part of the meeting. Um, but that that uh would complete the the presentation, so. I'll defer to the board if you have any questions to for the experts or until after public comment.
Okay, um, Francisco, is there anyone in the um out there in the public that wishes to make any comments?
Yes, I do see several hands raised promoting.
Okay, uh, before you promote anyone, I just want the public to know that their comments will be uh held to three minutes and um. Mister Ahmed Shahid will time everyone and let them know when they have one minute left. So please promote our speakers.
Thank you.
Francisco.
Oh, they, the person was promoted. I'm waiting for them to turn on the camera. So you're. You're unmuted, but we can't see. Or hear you.
Good evening, can you see me?
No, not.
My cameras are on? Okay. Okay, no. All right, hi, um.
Ms. Sharma, before you begin, I'd like to swear you in, please. Please raise your right hand. Do you swear that the testimony you will provide this evening will be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
State your full name, spell your last.
Uh, Renu, R E N U, Sharma, S H A R M A.
And your home address is?
Seventy-five Beacon Avenue, Jersey City, New Jersey, zero seven three zero six.
Thank you. Please proceed.
Uh, yes, so now, looking at this project, I just have to say a couple of things that this is a beautiful project, which I see. Uh, um, Anthony's presentation, it's a beautiful project with a lot of uh. Green element on it being a sixty-six unit building. And as um. I, Caroline has mentioned, I have witnessed seventy-six Saint Paul's Avenue building being constructed. Because when it was in, under construction, I used to live in Saint Paul's Avenue. I've also witnessed Leyd Law and Oakland Avenue big building construction. So those two buildings have definitely brought an addition to the neighborhood. So I believe that this project will also be a very positive addition to the neighborhood. It's a beautiful building with uh retail space as well. Uh, which will definitely help the neighborhoods' uh retail needs. And on top of that, the part which I like on this is it also has a fifty parking spot. So the resident wouldn't have to do hassle to look for parking around the area and. The multifamilies, two families, single-family homeowners who do the street parking. They will not be affected with the resident coming out on staying in the building with the parking. That's all. As a generally, also I have to add one point, being a resident of Jersey City, the young generations are the. Young professionals who are a resident of Heights uh working in city. Uh, they always prefer to live in apartment buildings, they move out to. City and they do not like to be in one family house or two-family house. This is, I'm completely telling with my own experience. I had two daughters, two grown-up, working in city, and and they prefer living in city because they are like, if I go exchange place, I'm not.
One minute to go.
Being in Jersey City, what I can do. So this will also retain the resident of Heights, young professionals. It will be more diverse community. Jersey City is always diverse, but it will be more diverse community. And if you ask me, do you like it? Do you like this project? Definitely, yes. That's all I have to say. And I like the way Anthony has just said that the consistency of wall and color break. Towards the Fleet Street, very thoughtful. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Promoting Amir Khan. So they declined promoting Anthony Harrington.
Hey, Mr. Harrington. Please uh raise your red hand. Do you swear that the testimony you will provide this evening will be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
Uh, yes, I do.
State your full name, please, spell your last.
Yep, Anthony Harrington, H A R R I N G T O N.
And your address is?
Seventy-four Jefferson Avenue.
Thank you. Please proceed.
Hi, thanks. So no relation to the development team. Um, I'm a member of Sergeant Anthony Park Neighbor Association who um came to the presentation. I thank the. Development team for presenting to us. I appreciate your responses. Um, we still are, I shouldn't speak for we, we, I'm a member of the. Uh, Park Association and one of the panel, um, the secretary, but I don't, I can't speak for everybody. Uh, but I will say there was a few people that were concerned still with two issues with the development. One is the height um along uh one thirty-nine. Again, going back to the um, the small vision area plan. It specifically calls out five stories as a goal, and this project is a little bit bigger. Um, and also, we talked to the development team about possibly moving the garage on to the one thirty-nine to the existing curb cut. They had said that the county would not let them do that, but we noticed that uh another project that Regina made was uh approved with a curb cut. On one thirty-nine, uh, you know, two blocks away. So we're wondering if that could be revisited. Um, simply because Fleet Street is the smallest and least active of the three streets that the project is on. Um, but generally, uh, we appreciate the development team and then we appreciate they reached out and made some adjustments. Um, we understand this is a a very large site. Um, we are hopeful, I didn't see a staff report in the, in the filing lines. We're hopeful that staff has uh formulated a opinion about this. Because we think it is a precedent project. Um, being on the R one zone, um, it's, it's a strange area. We know that this is um. Uh, ripe for higher density development. Um, but we want, we were hoping that zoning can take a more um. Uh, I guess authoritative stance on this corridor and um and create precedent along it. Um, thank you. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Promoting Gurin.
Hello, everyone. Do you see me?
No, we did not.
No.
Now you can see me?
Yes.
Hello, everyone. Good evening, and I hope everyone is good.
Good evening, sir. Uh, do you swear that the testimony you will provide this evening will be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
Please state your full name and spell your last.
My name is uh Gurinder Jit Singh, G U R I N D E R, J I T S I N G H.
And G H. And your address is?
Is seventy-four Hopkins Avenue.
Thank you.
Yes, yes. As I saw, Mr. Anthony represent really good. I, I saw the project, he explained really good. And to be very frank, I uh really like the project, whatever the overview. It's it's give a, you know, new life to the area. As I see, you know, the front, front side of, you know. It's it's a, the area is really developing and uh. The parking spot, fifty parking spot is the really good. I like it. The retail cafe, gym area, you know. It's a re- really good thing because we are youngster and we need to, you know, go out and uh it's not a. You know, good cafe, so I think so that is the best thing. Uh, and developer not, uh developers are not giving parking nowadays, but I'm really happy, you know, this building. Coming up with a fifty parking spot, really good thirty-three bicycle. I heard about it. That's really nice, you know. If somebody can go, young generation go, you know, they need a bicycle, they can, you know, get it easily, you know, from there. And the most, uh, you know, attractive part, the landscaping, one was saying, we told, you know, there's a ninety-two street tree. That mostly attractive part, but the parapet line I saw with the green area that looked really good. And you know, this is the really uh good, give a life to the area. I know there's a lot of building, but. This building, I I I see really, you know, different than the greenery, it's, it's all good, you know. I like it very, very much from my point of view. Yeah, so.
Thank you.
And there is one more hand. I'm gonna promote Amir Khan one more time. Wasn't sure if it was a mistake. Alright, so they are declining. Uh, that was the last hand.
Okay, so we'll close out the public portion. Um, are there any comments or questions from the commissioners? Anyone have any questions, comments?
I have a few.
Okay.
Um, so for. Uh, and I'm not sure who would be able to answer this, but for the affordable housing units, you know, we're gonna have seven units. What's the mix of those units?
Uh, I don't have the mix right now, but that is regulated uh. And decided by the Division of Affordable Housing um Department. So. It will be a mix of one, two, and three-bedroom units. It'll also be a mix of. Moderate income, low income, and very low income. It is not, you know, you, it's not a situation where you're looking at seven moderate-income units. There is, there is a specific formula. That the Division of Affordable Housing will provide to us. Um, and and we will ha- we will have to follow that. It's not, it's not negotiable.
Okay, um, next question, I I think this is probably for Mr. Vandermark. Because I was just having difficulty interpreting so- some things, but. Um, along Fleet Street and and Ocean Avenue. It, is there regular sidewalk there? As well, and and I can't really tell how wide it is.
Yeah, absolutely. Um. Beyond the building line, uh, on Fleet Street, we have a fourteen-feet, seven-inch-wide sidewalk. If you reduce the area of the um, uh, street tree pit. Uh, it's reduced down to nine foot, seven inches in between the uh property line and the edge of the uh landscaped. Uh, both bioswell uh and street tree. On Oakland Avenue, um, the overall sidewalk width is eleven foot six. Um, however, uh, it's reduced down to six foot six uh in width. Uh, in front of the building line. However, our building is stepped back all the way in, as you can see in the sawtooth. So there is landscaping. Uh, that varies from one feet all the way up to, you know, approximately ten feet. So. You have the feeling of this sidewalk being approximately almost twenty-one feet in width. But you, you know, you're kind of walking through uh a landscape zone to your right side and then a landscape zone to your left side. So we have, uh, you know, kind of substantial uh ADA compliance sidewalk widths on both Fleet Street and Oakland Avenue. And for one thirty-nine, you know, twelve foot ten, so we have plenty.
Great, okay. Yeah, a- again, I was just having a hard time. It might even, I might have even been looking at the. No, that's not your problem. Um, next, this might be a Mr. Harrington question. Um, for the, for the, the parking garage, the stacked parking garage. Um. What, uh, actually, two-part question. Is the expectation that that this is going to be rental units here?
Uh, I believe it is, yes.
Okay, um, and so with that parking system. Um, along with installing it, will there be some kind of long-term maintenance contract for it?
I, 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 my, my answer is, is. I would expect so, but I don't know, Anthony might be more familiar.
Yeah, there, there's an annual maintenance contract on that system. We've had systems uh in Jersey City now, uh specifically at six fifty Montgomery, that's. Probably twelve years old. Um, so yeah, there's, there's a maintenance uh contract annually on each, on these systems.
Okay, and I, I didn't see a staff memo on on this, but. I, I would tend to think that. The parking is one of the, the things that makes the, the project, you know, a, a little bit more amenable. For getting a variance, and I, I think that that would be something that would be very important. Um, and then. Um, I guess this next one is for Ms. Wurstel, um. Like many variances where you're kind of filling in an odd shape uh as we are, and and this is. It is an odd block. Um. You know, uh, that's used as one of the kind of justifications for. I- in both the positive and negative criteria analysis. But, but in, in this case, there, there are. Three conforming, single-family homes on Fleet Street that. That, that they were conforming and getting rid of them is one of the things that makes this an odd lot. Um, maybe, could, could you speak to that?
Uh, yeah, let me uh pull up a, the survey.
And Carolyn, if you needed, I could pull it up as well.
Yeah, okay, so let me um share a screen.
Cause it, it wouldn't have been that odd if you didn't get rid of the house, so.
Yeah, so, so, um, so this is, this is the survey, so the, there's actually only one lot that fronts on Fleet Street. Uh, so Fleet Street itself, I. Uh, so Fleet Street itself, I think this is, this is one family or one of the sort of one and two family. There's another one here and then, um, let me see if I've got.
Actually, you know what? I might, I might, I might be mistaken. I, I might have misspoke and I meant to say Oakland.
Oakland, yeah.
I meant to say Oakland.
Yeah, you can sort of see. So here, here's the shape. This, this gives us, this might be a little bit easier to see. You can see the block itself. So again, so on Fleet Street, this is a large sort of industrial structure that sort of is in the middle of the lot. And then on Baldwin, you've got a, a series of these homes. And then this right here is a multifamily structure. So on Fleet Street, there were only two lots that were conceivably like one and two family. Um, so that's, that's really wasn't a, a very strong presence on Fleet Street on this, this section of the block. Um, on Oakland, there were, um, this lot right here was vacant. And then there are one, two, three, there were three lots that, that were that had the sort of one and two family structures on them. Um, I think that this is, again, it's, it's not, I wouldn't say this is typical. It's a very short block because of how Route one thirty-nine sort of runs at an odd angle to your typical grid. So you ended up with a very sort of short block here, whereas you can see it to the block to the north of us. You have a much stronger, um, a character of the, the sort of the typical one and two family design. So here on, you've got a property that, that fronts right on Route one thirty-nine. And then you really only had one, two, maybe three, potentially three sort of three families. So I think it's, it's because of this location on Route one thirty-nine, which cuts this blocks off and creates this sort of shallow corner. I think that's what makes this site appropriate for this style development versus say if we had a, a more typical block where you would have more of that traditional block of the one and two family homes. So I, I think that's what makes this site more unique is those conditions.
Okay. Yeah. And I'm, and I don't have any further questions, but I'd also like to hear what staff has to say about that and about those six stories.
Yeah, before we move to staff, I do have one question or maybe further clarification. I guess maybe your traffic expert would have to answer this one, maybe. Um, the one gentleman spoke about Regina's maids where they, the, the community, I guess, asked you to keep the right-of-way, the entrance to the garage where it was on the highway. And as Regina's maids were permitted to keep their entrance on the highway, is there any reason why it was shifted to Fleet Street? Just.
I, I can bring out Mr. Klein, but I think the, the short answer is that, I mean, our professionals reviewed it and then didn't think that was a a, a, a safe condition or Fleet Street was a much safer condition. And we believe that the Regina property is landlocked. They don't have an alternative to, to an alternative street. So, you know, I think if, you know, if you have the choice between a curb cut on one thirty-nine and, and another street, the other street's probably, you know, gonna be mandated by, by one thirty-nine. But with that said, I, I can bring up Mr. Klein to address that.
I think you've answered it. Thank you. Uh, if we have no more comments or questions from the commissioners, can we hear from staff?
Sure. Um, so this is an inherited project for me. I did not prepare a report. I only had shared conditions with the applicant earlier. Um, I can go through those conditions. I did notice that there were some questions that came up from, with the commissioners, and I didn't know if they were addressed properly thoroughly with the applicant's professionals. I can kind of circle back to any of them if you'd like me to. I could do that now. Um, I believe one of the things that you mentioned was the, the six stories. And, um, I think the, whether the lot was could accommodate this and I guess whether or not it was actually appropriate for the site. Is that, is that accurate?
Yeah. And, and also in granting a, a variance, many times it is because it's an unusual lot. And this particular design fits that, that lot that gives you positive criteria to, to talk about. Um, but, but, but in, but in this case, it's, there are three conforming homes that, but, but by their removal, the lot size becomes unusual. It's sort of, do you, do you understand what I'm asking?
I do. I do. Um, and I do know that that is, is often, um, an example or a reason given for proposing a use that's not permitted and is really kind of justifying that either the allowed uses, required uses, permitted uses are not appropriate and the proposed use is more appropriate. Um, and I think in this instance, because the lot could be subdivided and because there are existing one and two family homes, everything, it's not that black and white. But I think, um, it's more in the lines of special reasons when we're looking at kind of more of the, one, the purposes, of course, of the land use law, right? Um, as in really, uh, what is more, not necessarily appropriate, what's more? Is, is the site, can the site handle what's being proposed? And the site can handle what's being proposed as shown through, um, you know, the height, the shadow studies, um, the traffic study. Um, but also I think the six stories, and I know that the master plan that was just redone a couple of years ago, uh, talks about the one thirty-nine corridor and really talks about how it was not properly zoned as the R-one zone. Um, and prior to two thousand, that one thirty-nine quarter was actually zone C-two, uh, commercial two, um, which was actually permitted up to ten stories. So it has always been historically, I think, um, if you see a lot of it, even though, of course, there are some one and two families um, that back up to one thirty-nine, uh, commercial. Um, and in some instances, even a little industrial. Um, and so when the master plan was really looking at this, uh, area, looking at this, this boulevard, so to speak, this highway really is a highway. It not really is. It is a highway, right? State highway. Is one and two family appropriate uses there? Or, um, are these multi-unit mid-rise buildings semi-commercial mixed-use developments more appropriate? Um, and that was what the master plan was determined, you know. Uh, that was also something that staff believed was more um, accurate for that site, for that corridor and provides protection for the lower-rise, um, uh, lower intensity residential behind it to the north. Um, and so that's really, I think, more what this was focused on, uh, this project. Uh, kind of reconciling the new master plan and the new recommendations um, and taking into consideration the fact that it has been the zoned R-one for twenty years at this point. Has not been, um, developed, uh, properly or, or really, I think, past that with the one and two family. And I think the fact that there are existing lots that were taken help actually consolidate and make a larger lot that helps make a more efficient development um, ultimately, at the end of the day. I don't know if that helps. I'm, I'm really just trying to.
I, 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 I actually, I, I get that and I somewhat agree with it. But the, the brand-new master plan, it still didn't fix this. And we've been doing rezoning by, by variants, starting with all the, the little triangles along Fleet Street till we start getting the bigger and bigger triangles. But like I, I'm kind of struggling with why the master plan didn't fix this. If, if that's, if, if that's how staff really, if that's how the professional planners feel about it.
So we, I will say that it's not for lack of trying.
Okay.
Um, the phase, the phase one rezoning that we did, um, really just took into consideration the areas that I, I have called this point unzoned. Um, and those were areas that were, um, smaller commercial centers where the, when the city developed, um, within these multiple little communities, um, had these corridors, central corridors, uh, commercial corridors. And when the nineteen sixties and seventies zoning kind of came through, um, when we were dealing and looking at all of, um, the loss, the city that this had population and maybe investment, um, a lot of those areas that were commercial were rezoned residential. Um, and it kind of killed a lot of commercial corridors. So our phase one is a part of the master plan because it's pretty extensive, was to really deal with that. Uh, we called it, we called that at the time corrective zoning. I still like that term for it. Uh, our phase two, um, is the R-one, which is again, something that I know this board is incredibly, as is tonight, even though I'd say tonight is a little bit different. Um, the R-one this board is very, um, familiar with, um, because almost all of, uh, probably almost, because I, I think, I haven't done an annual report in a couple of years. Um, but I'm pretty sure the majority of the applications that come to this board come through the R-one. Um, and that's the phase two that we've been dealing with at city council. We keep trying to get to first reading, um, and we're hoping that that happens in October. Um, and as a part of that phase two, we were picking up the, the communal corridor um, that we also dealt with at this board a couple of years ago. Um, and then the phase three really would be this one thirty-nine. You, eventually, when, when phase two goes through, you'll start to see that we are renaming these zones so that they're a little bit more, I think, logical. Um, so we would probably call, um, this one thirty-nine neighborhood commercial three um, as in different intensity levels of neighborhood commercial or neighborhood commercial two. So it's not for lack of trying. It's just that unfortunately, or fortunately, because it's a democratic process, political processes take, um, a long time. And we're really trying to make sure that we have enough meetings so that residents understand enough because it is not anything that is, I think, that easy to understand sometimes. So again, I, we are, we definitely are trying, um, but it, it was, it is something that we're trying to roll out in a multi-phase kind of process as well.
Thank you, Tanya. I appreciate that explanation because I didn't understand. My question was the same as Kate's or going to be the next question.
I don't think it was an answer, but I'm trying.
No, it's, it's better.
Perfect. Yes. Okay. So at this time, I am asking, are there no other questions or concerns from anyone?
Is it, is it okay if I put the conditions on the record? I mean, I sent them to Mr. Harrington. If you, if the board is fine with a verbal agreement that he accepts the conditions, I'm fine with that too, instead of just reading them into the record because they're very common.
And i- if I, before that, if I could just address the, the height, uh, question that was raised with the, the, the five stories versus six stories. As you saw during the presentation, we were, um, very, uh, uh, diligent, if you, if you will, to, to, to bring the four, five, six kind of, you know, staggered, um, heights there. Um, we didn't go with five stories straight across. That's where you see, like, if you did five stories straight across consistent with the, you know, the master plan vision, it, the, the, the building wouldn't be as unique and, and inviting, I, I don't think, when in the, in the design. So and, and I think at the end of the day, it's probably less square footage. So it, it really was more trying to be consistent with the Fleet Street area and then bringing it up to, to, uh, to one thirty-nine.
Thank you. So if there are no other questions or concerns, okay, I'm going to ask for a motion to vote on case uh, Z-two-three-dash-zero-zero-four.
I will make that motion. Carl.
If, for, for the record, I would, I would agree with Ms., Ms. Marion's conditions that she did here with me previously.
Yes, with conditions. Okay. Carl, uh, gave the motion. Can I get a second?
A second.
On a motion to approve, Commissioner Shadid?
Yes.
Commissioner Patel?
Yes.
Commissioner Park?
Yes.
Commissioner Boyle?
Yes.
Commissioner, is it looking? You're on mute.
Yes, yes. Do you hear me? Sorry.
Okay. Um, Commissioner Donnelly?
Yes.
And Chair Coyle?
Yes.
Motion carries. All in figure with conditions.
Thank you very much.
Thank you so much, everyone.
Thank you.
Oh, hey, and I, I forgot to mention, I, I hope there is a condition about the, uh, about the parking maintenance system. So, but let's not re-revote. I'm just, just do the right thing.
We'll add that. Agreed.
Chuck, are you okay with me adding that?
Yes.
Okay, okay. We'll add that. Okay.
Okay, great.
Shall we take a break for Iris?
Okay. Thank you.
We need, uh, who? We need Commissioner Patel.
Uh, Vin?
Yes.
I need to ask you a question. Can we not just begin recording it or?
Is here. I see his Venetian blinds, but, uh,
All right, um, we will now have case, um, Z-twenty-three-Z-dash-zero-zero-five. Um, can we please promote Stephen Joseph?
Actually, uh, that would be me, Commissioner.
The Higgins.
Yes. Good, good. Good evening, everyone. Uh, Michael Higgins of Castano Quickly and Chiramie on behalf of the applicant Kyle Bouchard and Sarah Burrows. Uh, this is for, uh, well, first, um, could I please, uh, I'd like to confirm receipt of our affidavit of proof of service in our notices.
Yes, I was just about to tell you that, Mr. Higgins. We have your affidavit, your proof of service, notice of publication. We're gonna mark that iris as A-one.
Yes, A-one is received and marked.
So let's make sure Commissioner Shadid is here other than his window. Are you here, Ahmed? Great. Okay, good. As long as you're in the vicinity, so we can, you can hear what's going on. And, uh, Mr. Higgins, you have who is, uh?
We have, uh, two witnesses for this application. Um, our architect is Frederick Cook and our planner is Carolyn Wurstel.
Great. So.
Okay. Thank you. Uh, so this is for sixty-five Room Street. That's, uh, lot sixteen in Block twelve-two-oh-one. Um, this is a undersized corner lot. It's in the R-one zone. It's only one thousand, one hundred and thirty-six square feet actually in lot area. Uh, the lot's currently improved with an existing, uh, single-family with a carport on that lot. So our application this evening is to replace and improve the existing carport uh, with a garage and there will be a terrace on top of that garage. Uh, so for this, uh, we need a couple of variances. Uh, first, we have building coverage where sixty percent is permitted and a hundred percent is proposed. Uh, lot coverage where eighty-five percent is permitted and a hundred percent is proposed. Uh, rear yard setback, uh, where thirty-five feet are required and zero feet are proposed. And, um, minimum privacy screening for the terrace uh, where a six-foot privacy fence is required and we have a four-foot guardrail. And lastly, there's, uh, one design waiver for projection of the rear yard steps, uh, more than four feet. Uh, so these are a few C variances and design waivers. Uh, however, I'd like to note, uh, there is an existing carport, uh, with the same dimensions occupying that space. So these are essentially existing conditions that we are replacing and improving with a new garage with better materials. And, uh, overall, we believe that these variances are justified due to the, uh, undersized nature of the lot. So, um, with that, I think we could promote our architect Frederick Cook. If he could get sworn in. Uh, I believe Frederick is having some technical difficulties this, this, uh, this evening. So, um, if possible, I'll actually be sharing the plans, um, from the portal and he can walk me through them for his presentation.
Hey, guys, I'm, I'm here. I'm here on voice, but I can't do the screen thing.
Okay, Mr. Cook. I cannot, you cannot see me either, so we'll, uh, we'll work this, this fine.
Blind, leaving the blind, is that?
Exactly.
Way to go, right?
We should be fine. But Mr. Cook, if you do raise your right hand, do you swear that? We should be fine, but Mr. Cook, if you do raise your right hand, do you swear that you will? Tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
Of course, yes.
State your full name, please, spell your last.
My name is Frederick Cook, C O O K E. I'm a registered architect in New Jersey and New York.
Thank you. Witness is sworn.
Okay, can everyone see my screen over here fine?
Yes.
All right, Frederick. So just direct me as you go through and just please walk the board. Through these plans, show them the terrace area garage that we're proposing.
The simple version is if, if you're looking at the lower portion of their site where you see the spiral stair. There's an existing carport. When I got called in, they wanted to remove an oil tank from underneath it, but in order to do so, they would have to. Significantly repair or replace the existing carport. So we recommended replacements. That, of course, brought up the issue that the current carport hadn't been approved. So we are really just replacing carport that's there. But adding a staircase so they can use the roof as outdoor space for their yard. In doing so, we brought. As much to code as we could, you know, we give more privacy fencing. We sort of made everything work a little bit better. But we are still in the existing non-conforming status that we were in before of a carport basically filling the backyard. If you have more specific questions, I'd be glad to answer them, but that's, that's the really essence of what we're doing.
Frederick, I'd just like to show the board just so they can, they can see the visuals. I'll scroll through the pages. So if you could just describe what's on the screen currently.
Yes, so currently, currently we're seeing a site plan. Part of the site plan, you see the spiral staircase in that area. Above the spiral staircase is where the new deck would be over the carport. You're seeing a little extension off the back of the building, which is a rear entry to. The home and the little X area, the step going up to that entry. And that's all existing underneath the carport. The, the previous owners and, and the current owners currently leave from that step onto the roof. To use the roof of the carport as, as an outdoor space. We are changing that to include a staircase.
I'll go to the.
Yeah, go to the.
The next page.
The elevations, that would be great. Alright, so yeah, it's a three D. You can see pretty well at the, on the right-hand side of the, of the elevation, you see. The new garage door we're proposing is currently garage door there. As, and, and we are referring to this as a carport because it is open fundamentally to the outside air. Even though it's closed on three sides due to the adjacent properties and the garage door, but the left-hand side is open to the air. Hard to see in these images, but. We can go to the next one. I think that's, I'm not sure much, 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 what else there is to say. We are adding the spiral staircase. It does leave enough space for a car to park in the carport. Obviously not a suburban, but a typical car can park there. And we have enough headroom to make that work. The, the previous owners in the previous carport, actually in order to make their car fit, cut a huge chunk out of the. As structural beams above in order to have headroom, we are trying to repair that problem.
Okay.
Yeah, again.
We could show also right here, these are photos. If you just described this Frederick for the board.
What we're seeing in the lower left-hand corner is the, is the carport that's there. The, the garage door that was there was industrial in nature. More of sort of the, I would call it very icky urban. You know, roll down shutter. We're, we're replacing with a standard and traditional garage door. So it feels more in keeping with the residential neighborhood. Character of the house. Again, there's no railing on the deck above, even though it's being used as a deck. So we're including a four-foot rail in order to. Provide some safety and security for people on the deck. But it does also give it sort of more of that residential character instead of that weird sort of industrial infill that the current garage or carport feels like.
Okay, and that rail is, is depicted that we're proposing in the upright, the west elevation.
Enlarging the elevation right above the pictures.
And the bottom right elevation, which is the south elevation, is depicting the staircase that we're talking about. About the spiral staircase.
Okay, staircase up and the existing stair to the home itself that enters from the car, current carport.
Okay. Anything you'd like to add for these? These are more.
I think that's pretty straightforward. I mean, one of the, one of the issues we had was making the elevation. I think we raised the elevation a little bit to, to accommodate the garage door opening inside instead of roll out garage door on the outside. And still being able to fit a contemporary car.
Okay, I'll just go through all the sheets so the board could see everything once more. Okay, so does that conclude your presentation, Frederick?
Yeah, unless anybody has any questions.
Okay, so I'll stop my screen share for now. I guess we'll move on to Ms. Wurstel's planning testimony and then we can circle back. And if anyone has any architectural questions for Frederick, I can pull the plans back up. If we could just get Carolyn. Carolyn was already sworn, I think, so.
Yes, Ms. Wurstel, you remain under oath.
Yes. Okay, good evening again, everyone. So we're here again for a couple of bulk variances for this proposed conversion of a, against a essentially. Existing carport into something of an enclosed garage. So as mentioned, this is an undersized lot. It is. And, and we've got a, a situation in which case we're taking what is essentially a, a, an accessory structure on this lot. And through the proposed improvements, we're attaching it to the structure. So we're taking what is an accessory structure and we are now incorporating it into what is the principal structure. So in doing so, we're asking conservatively, we're asking for some variances. For what are essentially existing non-conforming conditions. So I want to start off with that minimum rear yard setback. So in the R one district, there's a minimum rear yard setback of thirty-five feet required for principal structures where zero feet is proposed. In this case, to provide a conforming set rear yard setback would be a hardship on this lot. The subject property is significantly undersized approximately twenty-three feet by fifty-five feet deep. So it is just over half your typical lot depth. And the existing principal structure has a rear yard setback of approximately eight feet, seven and a half inches. And that's two, actually, let me share my screen and. Okay, so that, that's this depth right here, right where the, the door, rear entry into the building. Exists today. So that's, that's the rear yard, existing rear yard setback for this property. This project will replace this, what is an existing carport in this area that has an existing zero-foot rear yard setback. So we're sort of maintaining that existing condition. And it really won't, doesn't have any impacts on light and air. The building directly adjacent to us along. The rear lot line is that is your foot line. It has no windows that will be impacted by the proposed. Construction adjacent along this lot line is existing fence that, that will. Is about the same height approximately of the proposed structure. So there will not be significant impact to light in air along that lot. And it's very consistent with the existing setbacks of the. Carport that exists there today. Similarly, with the maximum building and lot coverage. The maximum building, the property has, is proposing. With this, we're taking an accessory structure. We're making part of the principal structure. So overall, the building coverage on the site is going to be about a hundred percent as well as the lot coverage. These again are existing conditions today. The existing carport. Plus the building are essentially about the same coverage. There is a new portion approximately right here. Where the terrace is going to attach to the rear wall of the structure. And so that's essentially really the only new building coverage that is going to be proposed as part of this project. In terms of lot coverage, it's a hundred percent lot coverage today. It will remain a hundred percent lot coverage with this application. And overall, you know, I think this prop, project does provide some benefits over the existing conditions. We are providing approximately a hundred and seventy square foot terrace. Formalizing that terrace above the garage, which really provides new outdoor space for this existing undersized property. Which doesn't have any outdoor space as is. And it will maintain the same coverage conditions on the property as, as well as improving the facade. With the replacement of that roll-up door with a new more traditional garage door. So I think that that provides two benefits with this proposed improvement. Additionally, we're seeking a variance for privacy screenings for the terrace. So this is the proposed terrace up here. There's a requirement that of a privacy screening measuring six feet high be provided for the terrace. This project is proposing a guardrail. It's this sort of dotted line here. It'll be four feet high. And it is, it's your typical metal guardrail. So we believe that this will present a better design alternative in terms of light and air. Because instead of a six-foot tall privacy screen, which wouldn't really allow a light to go through, it would create another additional six-foot. Form on top of this terrace. With the private, with the, the guardrail, you're still going to be maintaining the, the same. The same light and air that exists there today. I think that we still are, with this design, we maintain privacy to the neighbors. Again, this is a, a block or a, a lot line wall. There are no windows along it. So there's no privacy impacts to the adjacent property here to the rear. And then to the side, we're proposing this spiral stair here that provides access from the, the ground up to the top of the, the. The carport or to the garage deck area. And in doing so, it really pushes the portions of the, the terrace that will be actively used. And more intensively used farther away from this neighbor's property and, and the lot line. So I think in, in doing so and in the placement of the, the. Stairs here, we're still providing that privacy for that neighbor that would be achieved with that screening. And then finally, we're seeking a design waiver for the, the encroachment of the rear, the stairs into the rear yard. I think we're being very conservative here and asking for this. With the, the way that this has been designed, you know, there, this area has become sort of part of. The building, the principal structure. And then this stair is sort of an area that's sort of cut out around it. So I think we're, we're sort of being conservative, asking, requesting this, this deviation or waiver. This spiral stairs is about as compact as you're going to be able to get a stair. That's going to be able to meet, you know, code requirements in terms of tread height and, and tread width. Within what is a very small rear yard area. And, and overall, it, it providing conforming stairs to reach this space would be a hardship. The rear yard area is very narrow and, and to begin with, and undersized to begin with. So there really is no conceivable way that you could provide stairs and would not need this sort of design waiver. So, you know, I, I think that overall this project really again, as I said, provides. Benefits to the, the project, to the property. Again, we're formalizing and creating outdoor areas, outdoor space where none exists today. And we're providing improved streetscape. With this proposed garage where you can see today, there's, you know, a sort of green roll-up. Door, very sort of industrial in nature as, as Mr. Cook mentioned. And we're going to replace it with something that integrates with the, the design of the building and is much more residential in character. So I think overall it does lead itself to an improved streetscape. I think the granting these variances will advance the municipal land use law. It is going to be appropriate use and development of property consistent with purpose A. Through the proposed, an appropriate addition to a single-family building and allowing that, you know. Parking area to be improved. And it will improve the streetscape consistent with purpose I with the new garage door. I don't believe this will result in a substantial detriment to the general welfare. It's replacing existing accessory carport with a new one-story enclosed garage that'll have a similar, similar footprint and overall massing. There'll be no substantial detriment to light air and open space with this project as we're, we're matching the, the existing. Bulk of the, the garage there today. And I think it'll significantly improve that streetscape as, as I had mentioned. And overall, the, the requested variances will likewise not result in substantial impairment to the intent and purpose of the zone plan and zoning ordinance. You know, this is consistent with the purposes of the R one district to encourage compatible infill development. And preserving the integrity of residential neighborhoods. So I think that overall that this. Application can be granted in that it meets both the positive and negative criteria. And I'm happy to answer any questions if anyone has any.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Carolyn. Okay, so I think that does conclude all of our direct testimony for this evening. But again, we are, we're happy to address any questions at this point that the board has.
Okay, first, I'd like to ask Francisco, is there anyone out there to make any comments or ask any questions in the neighborhood?
Do not see any hands raised.
Okay, great. Do the commissioners have any questions or concerns?
I'm just curious about how long this non-conforming condition has existed. You would mention a prior owner.
Can you repeat that, Kate? I, I was a little muffled.
Sorry. Could, could you give us some context and let us know how long this non-conforming condition has existed?
As in, okay, I'm not sure how, how long the building's been existing on this lot.
I, I mean, this, the non-conforming condition.
The carport specifically?
Yes.
Yeah, I could speak to it a little bit. I can't, I can't speak with any certified manner. This is Frederick Cook, the architect. Given the wiring that's done in the current building, I would say it's more than twenty-five years old. But I can't speak with any authority as to when it was actually built. But, but, but the type of wiring is definitely like nineteen nineties and earlier. In the roll-down door, I have no idea. It's, it has four coats of paint on it, so I assume it's been there a while.
Okay, no, that's, that, that's helpful. And the adjacent building that kind of will abut the, the new terrace. Owner of that building has no issue with. There being an outdoor space with people potentially hanging outside right next to somebody's bedroom. Even though I know there are no windows.
There's no windows. It's a mandatory facade and, and to my understanding, they've been using it as a terrace. The current owners have been using it since they moved in and they said that they, the, the previous owners had also used it.
Okay. Okay.
They just, they just didn't have stairs to get up there. They had a hop up. Jump.
All right.
Any other questions from the commissioners? Okay, let's hear from staff. Any comments from our staff? Francisco?
Yeah, so I don't want to be too repetitive, but I think it was mentioned earlier. That the variance is being triggered because of the renovation that the applicant wants to make to the already existing carport. So it's standard law and the R one is twenty, twenty-five hundred square feet where this law is approximately a thousand, one hundred and thirty-six. So roughly a thousand, three hundred and sixty-four square feet less than a standard law. It is the opinion of the staff that the proposed application is consistent. With its neighbors who also have small lots and existing rear terraces, terraces in the back or the rear. Staff believes that these variances can be granted without significant detriment to the zone plan or the public good. Staff does recommend approval with conditions. I did not. Issue Mr. Higgins a staff report. I don't know if you want me to read the conditions on the, on the record or. Are you okay with the standard conditions, Mr. Higgins?
I, I would like you to read them onto the record if possible, please, Francisco.
What a problem. Okay, so the first condition is all materials and colors shall be shown on the final plan. No change to the facade, site design, including materials, as well as any changes that may require, may be required by the Office of Construction Code. Shall be permitted without consultation with and approval by planning staff. Shall be permitted without consultation with and approval by planning staff. Um, all testimony given by the applicant and the witness in accordance with this application shall be binding. Um, and lastly, the applicant shall provide an affidavit from the architect of record representing that everything is consistent with the final approved plans.
All those conditions are acceptable. Uh, thank you very much.
No problem.
If there are no other questions, um, I'm asking for a motion to vote on case Z two-three-Z dash zero-zero-five with conditions. Can I get a motion?
Motion.
Can I get a second motion?
Second.
Second.
A motion to approve, that is correct.
Yeah, motion to approve with conditions.
Yes, on a pushing to approve Commissioner Shadid.
Yes.
Commissioner Patel.
Yes.
Commissioner Park.
Yes.
Commissioner Boyle.
Yes.
Um, Commissioner Donnelly.
Yes.
And Chair Coyle.
Yes.
Motion carries all in favor with conditions.
Thank you. It's gonna be me on the next one as well, so I'll just stay on.
Okay.
Is, uh, Mr. Higgins, is it the same architect or is it a different architect?
Uh, no, we have a different architect for uh, two thirty-nine North Street, um.
Okay, um. Okay, so let's uh, let's, we'll go to case uh, Z two-three dash zero-zero-three. And we have Michael Higgins, uh, who's already been promoted. Um, so when your experts are present as well, so let's present that case.
Okay, um.
Higgins, first, we do have your notices, your affidavit, proof of service, notice of publication. So Iris. We're going to mark that as A one for this application.
A one is received and marked.
Mr. Higgins, who is your architect? I don't see your architect here.
Russell Bodnar.
Russell Bodnar, does he, is he? Uh, I don't see him.
He's joining.
There he is.
Okay, great. Um, okay, so uh, Michael Higgins of Castano Quickly and Chirami, uh, on behalf of Palisades Skyline LLC, the applicant here. Um, this is two thirty-nine North Street, um, lot eight in block one-three-zero-two. Um, similar to the last application, this is a very uh, undersized lot. It's an interior lot in the R one zone. Um, in lot area, it is only eight hundred and thirty-six point five square feet. Where a typical R one lot is twenty-five hundred square feet. Um, so our application this evening is proposing a new three-story, single-family home on the currently vacant lot. Um, and to accomplish this, we need a couple of variances. Those are rear yard setback where uh, thirty-five feet are required, uh, nine feet are proposed. Um, building coverage. Uh, where sixty percent is uh, required, uh, permitted, excuse me, and eighty-two percent is proposed. And then the stair bulkhead setback where nine feet and nine uh, inches are required for this building and eight feet and nine inches. Uh, from the setback are proposed. Um. It's our position that uh, these variances are largely uh, due to and justified by the undersized nature of the lot and um. I think when we see uh, Russell share the plans and Carolyn goes through her testimony afterwards. Um, the board will, will see that. Um, so I think with that, we could get uh, Russell uh, sworn in and he can share his uh, the plans that he prepared.
Sir, Bodnar?
Yes.
Please raise your right hand. Do you swear that the testimony you will provide this evening will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
Please state your full name, spell your last.
Yes, my name is Russell. Last name is Bodnar, B O D N A R. I reside at fifty-two Long Hill Road in Long Valley, New Jersey. And I have appeared before this board and other boards several times.
We accept uh, Mr. Bodnar's credentials, yes.
Thank you, and this is one.
Okay, Russell, could you uh, share your screen?
Yeah. Yeah. Okay, this is my screen here. Can you see everything?
Yes, we can see it.
Okay, no problem. Um, as you can see here, this is our. Our, let's just uh, jump up to the first one. We can see our location of our plans. Uh, we are actually located on North Street over here, um, right off of Nelson Avenue. Not far off of Kennedy Boulevard. We're located in the R one zone. And as Stephen said, we are a very small lot. It's uh, an infill lot off the corner. And we are only eight hundred and thirty-six point five square feet big. Um, the, the lot itself is only sixteen point seven-three feet uh, wide by fifty feet deep. So as you can see, that's gonna be very hard to have a thirty-five foot rear yard setback. Um, our prevailing, we are, uh, the, your. We are using the prevailing front yard setback which is at the zero lot line. So if we jump down to the floor plans right here, you can see our floor plans are as such. We have um, a four-bedroom home. We have three floors. Our uh, when we come in the first four, uh, first um, floor has a foyer, a little office. A full bathroom, a rec area, and we have a rear yard. Our rear yard setback is nine feet. We're required to have thirty-five, but uh, you know, we didn't feel like uh, we'd be able to get um. Uh, any kind of building on here if we try to do a thirty-five foot rear yard setback. Um, as you can see, then we go to the second floor, we have a, a bedroom, a uh, living room and dining room and a kitchen. And we have a uh, bathroom on that level. If we go to the third floor, we actually have a uh, master, uh, we have a master bedroom, uh, a bathroom. Uh, two bathrooms and another bedroom um, on that level on the third floor. And if we go up to the rooftop. We actually have a small rooftop terrace at two hundred and thirty-seven square feet. With a bulkhead, as you can see, we were talking earlier, from the front of the cornice line, we're actually ten foot. Like seven inches, but from the front of the bulkhead, from the bulkhead to the actual. Staircase itself is only eight foot nine. We're required nine foot nine. Um, to try to rearrange that with actually kind of squish some things in terms of, we're just only doing like a nine-foot bedroom as it is. And we're trying to make as much living room space as we could, so we're. Trying to, to take another foot out of like the living room or something else was causing other problems when we try to redesign a little bit to make that one variance go away. If we can go to the elevations on the next page, um. Uh, sorry, my dog just came in on me. Um, we're looking at a uh, a, a, a very traditional style elevation, some stone on the le- on the lower level. Some uh, cement board siding and cement board trim around the windows, aluminum clad uh, window frames. Um, our colors here on the left-hand side, we're using like a gray color for the cement board siding. A gray, light gray for the stuccos that we're using on the rear uh, portion of the lower level and on the sides. Uh, some gray vinyl type siding that's actually located in the rear of the property as well as like in some other small locations. In, in, in the back on top of this, um, actually on top of this uh, the, the, the bulkhead itself. So if we go down to the following facade, you'll see that this is our side view. Of our facade, we have that little cornice we were talking about earlier, that's actually made out of uh, cement board trim and PVC. And as you can see here, we have ma- basically our other building uh, adjacent goes along the whole section here. And we're provo- providing a stucco, light gray stucco on the side, as well as a light gray stucco on the other side of the lower level. Um, this is our locate, this is what our, our site actually looks like from the photo. Uh, this is our existing site in here. There's our two, the, the buildings adjacent to us are vinyl sided. This one actually has cement board siding. Uh, the buildings to the left of us are about two and a half stories tall, so we're gonna be a little bit taller than them. They're about thirty feet tall. And we're gonna be about thirty-three feet tall to their, our cornice. And then again, our setback with our nine foot, our, our eight foot nine to the uh, to the, to the, to the bulkhead. You won't probably be able to see that with the cornice anyhow. But that will be at uh, the forty-two max height that we, we're, we're allowed. So again, um, this is pretty much our, our site. Uh, we are providing on the roof itself. We are providing green roofing. We are putting another hundred, I believe it was a hundred and seventy-six square feet of green roofing in the front. In the rear to mitigate, mitigate some of the water, um, that will be uh. Bringing into this, into this, you know, trying to not have so much water leave our site. Right now, um, our site is completely paved, so by doing this. We're gonna have this area here, the green roofing in the front, the green roofing in the back, and that nine foot by, that nine foot by um. Basically sixteen foot section is mostly grass on our lower level. So we had to, and we have some planting down further on that, um, that would be further down. Going, why is that here? Um, sorry about this, guys. My thumbnail's not picking up on the side tonight for some reason. Where I can actually make the plans go down. Why that is. Sometimes that happens with this, this computer. Sorry, gang. Um. But as you can see here again, like I said, here's, here's our lot. You can see our lot here and you can see this is where our nine-foot rear yard setback is. I'm trying to, and then adjacent to us is this three-story building that we're, we're uh, going up against. And they're facing front and rear themselves, so this side, this is the side of their building. They actually have no windows here. This also has nothing on this side as well, and there's a, a smaller building to the, to the, to the east of us. Um, again, let's, we go back to the main plans. This is pretty much our building. Uh, I don't really know if. Need any other testimony other than what I'm, what I'm saying here. Um, so thank you.
Thank you, Russell. Okay, um, you can stop your screen share too.
Okay.
Um, okay, uh, we also have uh, Carolyn Rostel as our planner. We could have her sworn in as well.
And Mr. Rostel, you've been previously sworn. You remain under oath.
I am, and this is, this is the last you see of me tonight. Um.
Okay, Carolyn, um, if you wanna just explain to the board the justifications for the variances as outlined in your principal point statement.
Sure, of course. Um, so again, this is a, this is an application for a single-family home. We're requesting a few C bulk variances, which. Obviously very much relate to the fact that this is a severely undersized lot in the R one district. Um. We are requesting a minimum rear yard setback variance, um, as was stated. Uh, we are providing a rear yard setback of nine feet where thirty-five feet is required. It would be hardship for us to provide a, a compliant rear yard setback. Um, it would really uh, sig- leave only fifteen feet uh, of, of building depth that on this lot and obviously that, that doesn't really create a usable building footprint. Um. This property um, is uh, this rear yard is adjacent to the side yard of lot six. Uh, which runs on to an extent approximately ninety-one feet from Nelson Avenue. Um, a- and so there really will be no um, impacts to lay an air um, to that property from this reduced rear yard setback. It does not have any windows. Um, and furthermore, it really doesn't impact because of the, the unique configuration here at this corner. Um, where we've got a, a series of very small shallow lots up against a deeper lot, the lot six. There really is no impacts to lay an air to uh, what you would traditionally see as like a donut hole to a block. Um, we're, we're not there. And furthermore, the, the building at our corner does have already a hundred percent lot coverage, so. We already have a existing um, impacts to lay an air into that, that area behind the, the three very small buildings. Um, so we don't believe, I don't believe that this will have um, significant um, impacts to lay an air to adjacent properties with this uh, nine-foot setback here. Um, in terms of the maximum uh, building coverage, uh, we're proposing a building coverage of eighty-two percent where uh, sixty percent is permitted. Um, again, this is a severely undersized lot. Um. We're proposing approximately six hundred and eighty-six square foot building footprint. Uh, which we think is appropriately sized for this um, uh, property. Um, and provides adequate space for permitted single-family dwelling. The project is proposing a, a permitted um, lot coverage. We're at eighty-three percent. Where eighty-five percent is the maximum permitted, so we are providing a compliant uh, lot coverage, which is actually a, an improvement over the existing condition, which is a hundred percent. So um, we are requesting uh, that additional lot coverage, uh, which we think um, allows for sufficiently sized building footprint on this undersized lot. And then finally, um, we are proposing or requesting a, a, a variance for the uh, minimum uh. Setback for that bulkhead on the upper floor or, or at, at the roof. Um, where we're providing a setback of eight feet nine inches, where nine feet nine inches is the minimum required. Um, that, that stair bulkhead does provide access to a small um, terrace at that roof level. Uh, which is an additional outdoor amenity space on what is again, a very small lot. Um, we believe that, you know, it's, this is sort of a de minimis uh, setback. We are providing uh, almost nine feet. Um, so we're only about a foot uh, uh, deficient um, with that setback. Um, and we believe with the cornice line that it should um, again, visibly reduce uh, the, the impact of that um, bulkhead up on the roof. I think overall, this project does provide uh, numerous benefits. Again, we're reducing lot coverage. Uh, we're uh, to a conforming lot. Lot, uh, coverage of eighty-three percent. We are, uh, this is an infill development. It's a vacant site and we're infilling it with an appropriate single-family home. Um, we're meeting, you know, all of the height uh, uh, requirements. We're not asking for height variance here. It is providing a uh, uh, new street tree uh, where there isn't one today. So I think overall, this is a project that really improves uh, this lot in this block. I think it advances the purposes of the municipal land use law. Um, it will grow the appropriate uh, use and development uh, consistent with purpose A with the development of a new single-family home. Uh, I think it provides adequate light air and open space to the surrounding properties consistent with purpose C. And I think it will promote a more desirable visual environment consistent with purpose I through an infill development on a currently vacant lot. Um, I don't believe this will result in a substantial detriment to the public good or the general welfare. Um, it's a, it, a single-family home and a, and a continues that residential development in the R one district. Um, we are uh, on a severely undersized lot, um, and we're trying to meet the, the bulk standards where we can, including a. Uh, conforming front yard setback and a conforming height. Um, and um. We are reducing that uh, coverage uh, on this lot itself. Likewise, I don't think this results in a substantial impairment to the intent and purpose of the zone plan or zoning ordinance. Uh, the purpose of the R one district is to encourage compatible infill development. Um, and preserve the integrity of residential neighborhoods, which I think this project is a perfect example of. So overall, I think that this uh, project can be justified and that the variances can be granted.
Okay, thank you, Carolyn. Um, that is all of our direct testimony for this application. Uh, once again, we can answer any questions to the best of our ability.
All right, before I open it to the commissioners, uh, Francisco, is there anyone from the public looking to make comments?
Uh, at this time, I do not see any hands raised for this project.
Okay, uh, do the commissioners have any comments or questions?
I have two tiny clarification questions. One, one is that from, from one of the pictures, it looks like there's a curb cut in front of the property. Can you confirm that that will be eliminated?
There will be, uh, no, no parking will eliminate the curb cut, yes.
Okay, and, and if that's not in the plans, it's a condition? The, the, the other is that, um. It's great that you're putting a, a, a tree in, and so I assume there will be staff, I assume there will be the normal. Conditions about the tree selection and all that good stuff. Whoever the staff is.
Yes.
But, okay.
Sorry.
Okay, good. That's all I got.
Okay, um, I know that you, I just have one question that. I know when we look at the buildings, this building is a budding homes on both sides. You talked about. Uh, the building behind it to the west of it. What about to the east of it? Does that building have any windows? Will be up against any? Blocking any windows on any structure on the east side of the building?
No.
No, okay. Um, and I guess I just wonder why you would not build to what is appropriate for the lot size. I mean, it's a brand.
It's. And we would have been stuck with a fifteen by sixteen footprint.
All right, um, Francisco, as the staff person, as the review planner, do you have any comments?
Yeah, so I will be very brief. As was mentioned, these variances are due to the fact that the site is in approximately sixteen by fifty. Yeah, so I will be very brief. As was mentioned, these variances are due to the fact that the site is in approximately sixteen by fifty measurement lot totaling to approximately, I think it's eight hundred and thirty-six square feet. So that being said, the applicant worked with city staff to make a really good compatible infill development. Um, it is in the opinion of the staff that the proposed application is pretty consistent with its neighboring lots as well as the, the area itself. Staff believes that these variances can be granted without significant detriment to the zone plan or the public good. Um, I will read the recommendations into the record. If that is okay, let me grab. So there are approximately six recommended, recommend, well, it's getting late. There's approximately six recommended conditions. The first one is all materials and colors shall be shown in final plans. No change to the facade site design, including materials as well as any changes to as, as well as any changes that may be required by the Office of Construction Code shall be permitted without consultation with and approval for planning staff. All, uh, all testimony given by the applicant and their expert witness in accordance with this application shall be binding. That is number two. Number three is all street trees landscaping shall be installed in accordance with three forty-five dash sixty-six and the city's forestry standards prior to an issuance of certificate of occupancy. A copy of the memorialized resolution with amended deed shall be filed with the Hudson County Register's Office with proof of such filing to be submitted to the Division of City Planning prior to the application for construction permits. Green roof shall be installed prior to an issuance of a certificate of occupancy. And lastly, number six, the applicant shall provide an affidavit from the architect of repor- record representing that everything is consistent with final plans uh, final approved plans. This affidavit should also speak to the confirmation that the green roof was installed at the same size or larger than presented for approval. With that said, staff does recommend conditions with, um, yeah.
Thank you. The recommendation or the concern that Kate had included now into the.
We can also add that and correct me if I'm wrong, it's to.
Eliminate the curb cut.
So we'll add a seventh condition to eliminate the curb cut.
All those conditions are acceptable to the applicant.
Okay. Any other questions or concerns? Okay, uh, I'm now asking for a motion to approve with conditions. Case two, three, dash, zero, zero, three. Can I get a motion?
Motion.
Can I get a second?
Second.
On a motion to approve with conditions, Commissioner Shadid.
Yes.
Commissioner Patel. Um, I'll come back. Commissioner Park.
Yes.
Commissioner Boyle.
Yes.
Commissioner Donnelly.
Yes.
And Commissioner Patel.
Doesn't seem to hear us.
Yeah, I don't think he can.
Vash, can you hear us?
Can they call me?
Vash, can you hear? There's a motion.
Yes, yes, yeah.
Great. Chair Coyle.
Yes.
Motion carries all in favor with conditions.
Thank you, everyone. Have a good evening.
Thank you.
Thank you, Russell.
Okay. All right. Do we have any resolutions to memorialize tonight, Avins?
Yes, we have two.
Okay.
Uh.
Does Iris need to take a break before we do this? Or should we just move through this?
Move through, take one, two seconds.
Yes, I'm, I'm fine, ready to go. Thank you. Thank you, appreciate it.
Both of these cases were heard July twentieth of this year. Present on July twentieth was, uh, Acting Chairwoman, uh, Arroyo and Commissioners Donnelly, Shadid, Brown, Zabliki, Park, and Patel. The first case is Z twenty-three dash zero, three, five. Sabrina and Glenn Stoffel. It was a two-year extension for their approvals at three sixty Ogden Avenue. That passed seven in favor, none opposed. All in favor of memorializing that is.
All right.
And the next was Z twenty-three dash zero, four, zero. Same date, July twentieth, same seven commissioners. This case though was the Riverview Neighborhood Association Appeal of the Administrative Officers' Interpretation for one fifty-two Ogden Avenue. There was a motion to deny that appeal and affirm the zoning officers' interpretation. That motion carried four in favor, three opposed. Uh, voting in favor was Commissioner Shadid, Brown, Zabliki, and Patel. Uh, voting, uh, sorry, it sounds like there's a fight outside. I can't, uh, uh, voting, uh, opposing that motion were Acting Chairwoman Arroyo, uh, Commissioners Donnelly and Commissioner Park. So all in favor of memorializing that is.
Hi.
Hi.
Francisco, there's a, an error on the, the voting page of this. I'm gonna send you a different one tomorrow.
Okay.
Okay, uh, other than that, that's all there is from this end.
Okay, so no executive session, nothing we need. Okay?
No.
Okay, with that, I make the motion to adjourn the meeting. Can I get a second motion?
Second.
All in favor?
Bye.
Okay, meeting adjourned. Enjoy night. Thank you.
Thank you. Have a good night, everyone.
Good night.
Bye-bye. Bye-bye.